Good evening, everybody.
Hi, good evening.
Long time no see.
Good evening.
So I don't know how many teachers on here got the same information, but there was routed a link to sign up for a COVID vaccine at Frehderd and Sun Prairie in Kenosha and you know, it was forwarded everywhere and people signed up. Someone called and said, yes, they they verified they had all the vaccines. And then we got an email today saying that it was canceled because it was just for Kenosha County teachers. And in the in the sign of genus, it didn't say that. So it was really just a blow to the gut. I mean, and they had they had like appointments going on and on into the middle of March and the end of March and I said about quick substitute teaching there, but I don't think I could double dip that way. Barely.
How about now? Can you hear me now? Never get those things to work.
I'm here, by the way, just in one second here, finishing draft or something. Okay. Let's see here. Do we have Tamika?
Yes, she's here.
Oh, good. All right. Well, then the time is 6:31. I think that we've got everyone on here, so I would like to call meeting to order if that's all right. And we have a little group of people. I'm sure that we'll have some people shuffle in. I'm going to call meeting to order and do roll call. Teresa Seem.
Here.
And then Tamika Bukovic. I thought we said Tamika was here. Is she not here?
Her name is on my page too. So, yes.
Okay. Then Molly Krychowiak.
Here.
And Danielle Bailey.
Here.
And Andrew Franklin's here. So we do have a quorum. So our next item is item one C, which is approval of the agenda. And is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Question, was the agenda changed recently? No, okay, all right. Then I'll move to I'll make a motion. Danielle.
A second.
All right, then I will do a roll call vote and Teresa Seem.
Hi.
Tamika Bukovic.
Hi.
Okay, Molly Krychowiak.
Hi.
And Danielle Bailey.
Hi.
And Andrew Franklin. I, the motion carries. The agenda is approved. I would like to just start out and I may defer to Dr. Moser, but I would like to say thank you to everyone who's here tonight. I deeply appreciate your commitment to our district and your willingness to be at a meeting that I'm sure will take some time. I promise you that we will be listening to everyone's comments. And so I hope that we can have a wonderful, vibrant, respectful discourse over the course of time, but I also make no illusion, it will probably be a lengthy meeting, but with that in mind, I think that we've got a great presentation to start. So I'd like to defer to Dr. Moser to present the reopening plan.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. And thank the full school board for this opportunity tonight to discuss the reopening plan, the reopening and the reopening plan of the Glendale River Hills Schools. We I would like to take the opportunity and I think your entire staff and faculty administrators, parents in the community would like to thank the board for tonight. This meeting, it's a standalone meeting. Nothing is being discussed other than the reopening of the school district. I consider this to be an exciting evening. It's been an extremely important evening for our community. I want to thank the school board for allowing a very participatory process that was not top down. The board gave the Glendale River Hills Community and School District a good name for allowing and encouraging the time and support for a proper process for making a good and well thought out reopening recommendation. And that's what is happening this evening and school board. This is a good example of how to do something. And it is appreciated. I want to thank the co-chairs of the reopening committee, the facilitators, the teachers, the staff, community members, all those in our school district, our community that had input in developing the reopening plan that is going to be presented this evening. Thank you. This is well done. And it took a lot of effort. But again, it was because the school board encouraged us to do this in the right way that we've had the time and and the effort that was needed in developing this plan. This evening, I am recommending to the school board the reopening of the Glendale River Hills School District Schools. I am making that recommendation this evening. I'm recommending the opening begin on March 8 in a rollout format. The reopening will be for all grades served by the Glendale River Hills School District. The reopening will allow for virtual and in-person instruction. The reopening will be done in a safe, healthy, socially pleasant and structurally sound manner for students, teachers, staff, administrators, parents and the community. By approving of this recommended, this recommendation tonight, the school board is giving teachers, staff, administrators and parents adequate time to prepare for the March 8 opening. The Glendale River Hills School District has a good and professional staff and faculty. I have total trust in their making the reopening of the schools exciting, safe and educationally sound. I'm recommending to the Glendale River Hills School District School Board tonight that they approve of a resolution that directs the reopening of the school district schools on March 8 in a rollout format for all grades and that the reopening of the schools will allow for both virtual and in-person instruction. Now, in our process this evening, in our in the agenda that President Franklin identified, following my introductory remarks where I have just recommended the reopening of the schools in the Glendale River Hills School District, I will be followed by the chairs of the reopening committee. And they will provide details now in support of that recommendation. Following that, the school board is welcome to ask questions, make comments. Then, as President Franklin mentioned, the community and parents will be given an opportunity. Then the school board can make any adjustments, amendments, changes to the recommendation. And then I am recommending that the school board vote this evening on the recommendation to reopen the Glendale River Hills School District beginning on March 8 of 2021. So with that, with the permission of the school board, I would like to call upon the co-chairs of the reopening committee who have not only of the committee, but the co-chairs of this process that's leading to tonight. They are Mallory Umar, Associate Principal at Parkway. Dr. Hyday Smith, the principal of Parkway. And Ms. Anna Young, the principal at Glen Hills. And they have done a marvelous job of working with our facilitators and and the staff, teachers, community members, parents for coming forth with tonight's plan. So, co-chairs, I think the school board is tired of listening to me. And now they want to get into the details of the plan. It is, the stage is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Moser. I would like to begin tonight's presentation with a brief introduction. I know that Dr. Moser just presented to all of you the reopening committee members, but I'd like to take just a moment to also have a face to go along with our names. I'm Dr. Hyday Smith, and I'm the principal at Parkway Elementary School.
I am Mallory Umar. I'm the Associate Principal at Parkway Elementary.
I am Anna Young. I am the principal at Glen Hills Middle.
Again, thanks for joining us this evening as we present to you our slideshow on preparing for a strong return.
The school reopening committee would like to begin by thanking our families, community members and staff for participating in the school reopening process and building alongside us. We would like to highlight some of the participation from our work over the last two months, including 371 community input session attendees in the daytime and evening sessions, weekly, sometimes more than weekly, staff meetings, focus groups, grade level team meetings and breakout sessions centered around school reopening topics and collaboration. 132 written exit slips submitted via Google Forms. This number does not even include the numerous letters, phone calls, individual conversations and questions that we've received in various mediums. Prior to receiving the reopening plan draft that was distributed yesterday, there were an additional 110 sets of eyes on it, offering very thoughtful changes, feedback and suggestions that were incorporated in the plan that you received. Thank you again to our families, staff and community for all of your collaboration and in the creation of a reopening plan for our district. Your involvement has been absolutely amazing and really appreciated.
Throughout the process, we have had the opportunity to consult, collaborate and partner with the North Shore Health Department, Airmark Food Services, Go Right Way Bus Company and school districts, as well as leaders across the state. Each of these partnerships have provided us with valuable information. This information has helped increase our knowledge base around other districts reopening experiences, important resources and helpful considerations that have been incredibly beneficial as we've worked to develop our reopening plan.
The work of the school reopening began in the summer of 2020 with the committees in the areas of health and safety, social emotional learning and curriculum and instruction. These participatory groups laid the groundwork for the start of the 2021 school year in late August. A decision was made to begin the 2020-21 school year virtually with an in-person learning option for students with IEPs. In early December, Dr. Moser approached the building administrators to form a reopening plan and presentation laying the process for this engaging in this work was shared with the staff and the community. In order to adhere to our participatory approach, the reopening committee held meetings with both staff and stakeholders to receive their input and perception around reopening schools. That information was compiled and used to develop a soft survey and the results of the input sessions and surveys were presented to the board in January and then discussed with the North Shore Health Department. With this guidance, a second round of community input sessions were held and a final commitment survey was given to both staff and families. And an additional consultation with the North Shore Health Department was conducted to review our initial planning. This guidance was used to develop the reopening handbook, which was provided to the staff and the community and the school board yesterday. Tonight, we are here for the board to make a decision about school reopening.
In early February, families received a survey that asked them to make their final commitment to an in-person or virtual learning option. The survey indicated that families who selected to participate in a virtual model would need to remain virtual for the duration of the school year, while families who selected an in-person model would have the opportunity to switch to the virtual model at any point. The final due date for that survey was on February 7th, about a week and a half ago. And since then, we had the opportunity to get in contact with families who did not respond to the survey. Numerous phone calls, emails, text messages. Thus far, we have been in contact with 95% of our families from Glen Hills and 100% of our families from Parkway. The last few students have been scheduled for in-person learning to ensure proper planning for class sizes. The results of this hard data survey informed the design of our classrooms and other decision-making factors within the reopening handbook. Staff members also received a survey and were asked to indicate their intentions for returning to work as well as some additional questions. The upcoming slides will show the survey results from both staff and families.
In reviewing our staff survey, we had 121 respondents. When asked about the current comfort level of returning to in-person learning at that time, 26.7% of our staff indicated that they were comfortable returning to an in-person learning model. When asked if a full vaccination for staff was attainable, what their comfort level would be, we found that that comfort level rose to 68.5%. Additionally, the staff was asked to consider the current pandemic data, the inherent risk and the current availability of the vaccine and to provide us their intent when a school reopening date was set. 78.5% of our staff indicated that they would return to in-person learning. 18.2% of our staff intended to obtain a medical exemption and would like to be considered for virtual instruction. 3.3% intended to take a leave of absence. When asked if a full vaccination for the staff was attainable, the response to the above question would change. 24% of our staff indicated that it would and 76% of our staff indicated that it would not change their answer.
When looking at the staff survey results around being considered for a virtual teacher position, 24.8% of our staff expressed an interest in being considered for a virtual teaching position, while 36.4% of our staff indicated that they would prefer not to be a virtual teacher and 38.8% of our staff didn't have a preference. We also asked our families to consider current pandemic data, inherent risks and current availability of the vaccine when selecting a learning model that best meets the needs of their students. 74.3% of our families shared that they would like to return to an in-person learning model, while 25.7% indicated that they would like to remain in a virtual learning model. 36.4% of our families also indicated that they intend to transport their child to and from school. 38.3% of our families indicated that they intend to utilize bus transportation to transport their child to and from school, while 25.3% of our families indicated that their child will remain in the virtual setting.
Prior to the February hard survey that families received, a soft survey went out to families asking for their preference in learning models. This guided the development of our models. On that survey, a majority of our families indicated that they would like full in-person learning model. That was the highest response. The second highest response was a virtual model and the lowest response from families was a hybrid model. We use that data along with other considerations to proceed planning for offering two models to families, an in-person and virtual model. These two options, in-person and virtual, were presented on the hard survey. You saw in the data slide that a majority of families are still interested in attending that in-person model, which is consistent with that soft survey data. Upcoming slides in this presentation will elaborate on schedules and more details about the learning models.
Teacher and class assignments based on survey results alluded us to look at Parkway Elementary School with a designated virtual teacher in each grade level and a designated in-person teachers at each grade level to accommodate the percentages of students that would like to return. At Glen Hills Middle School, a concurrent teaching model was selected. The concurrent schedule for Glen Hills allows for students to access full academic programming at all grade levels. And additionally, it builds transition times between classes at lunch and the start and end of the school day. Our class sizes, on average, for students in grades K through five in an in-person setting will be 21 students. And our average class size for students in grades six through eight would be 18 students. Of course, our virtual sections may be larger as we have families who might decide to move from an in-person model into a virtual model. What is concurrent learning and what will it look like at Glen Hills? Concurrent learning is when some students are in class in person and some students are participating synchronously in online teaching. The teacher in this situation seeks to meet the needs of those students in person and online simultaneously. It is students zooming in during explicit instruction moments. It is students collaborating with their peers during small group opportunities. And the camera would be positioned to capture instruction and accessed via Zoom. It is not students on Zoom the entire school day. It is not classroom livestream 24/7 with cameras. And it is not a big brother view of the classroom. Specifically at Glen Hills, we will seek to keep the virtual students in those sections small and seek learning opportunities in which they can partner with their in-person peers to encourage collaborative work that facilitates learning.
All of our students will have the opportunity to participate in Allied Arts classes. Our Allied Arts classes may feature modified activities and schedules. And some Allied Arts classes will be held in their regular spaces, while others may be held in an alternative space. For example, our PE classes may take place in the gym and/or outside when weather permits. Some synchronous Allied Arts courses may also be held on Fridays for our virtual learners.
Asynchronous Fridays will include the following activities: teacher training and collaboration for professional development and grade level curriculum meetings, additional cleaning routines, particularly of shared equipment and materials, classrooms and shared spaces and offices, as well as opportunities for family and teacher collaboration and communication, which could include office hours for students, IEP meetings and communication. In-person assessments for scheduled virtual learners. This would include our forward exam and local assessments as well as in-person small group student meetings and special projects and synchronous virtual classes for Allied Arts.
In regards to building entry and dismissal times, Parkway will have extended entry times occurring between 8:20 and 8:40 a.m. We are going to encourage our families to drop off their children between these timeframes, staggering students' entry into the building and lessening congestion as well as contact within the hallways. Between 3:15 and 3:30 p.m., students will be dismissed for door and car pickup. And we will load students onto their buses between 3:30 and 4:00 p.m. based on the order and the arrival of the school buses. At Glen Hills, students will enter the building based on designated entrances using a staggered approach to limit contact. At Glen Hills, students will be dismissed between 2:50 and 3:00 p.m. using a staggered dismissal process and using designated exits.
The next few slides outline sample schedules for Parkway and Glen Hills. I want to reiterate that these are sample schedules and final schedules will be shared with families in the coming weeks. You will note that this sample schedule for in-person learning at Parkway, there are extended times built in for procedures such as entry, dismissal, lunch and recess. And these are intentionally extended times to account for health and safety procedures and routines.
Here's a sample of Parkway's virtual learning schedule, which will include important content, content and subject matter. Students learning virtually will participate in classroom community building activities through our responsive classroom practices. Students will also receive literacy, math and science instruction, as well as a designated time for lunch and recess and for small group supports.
The Glen Hills sample concurrent schedule focuses on a school day that mimics a normal in-person school day. Those students who are learning alongside their concurrent classmates who are learning virtually at home will follow a very similar schedule. All students will have the opportunity to access their core academic classes as well as specialized programming. And there are additional times built in at both the beginning of the day, the end of the day, at lunch and in between classes to ensure that there are staggered moments to reduce contact between students as they transition from class to class.
There are many mitigation strategies that we are using to increase the safety of in-person learning. One of the most consistent and effective strategies that we can implement is requiring masks and also wearing them correctly. Masks are required both indoors and outdoors, including on the bus. Masks are required both indoors and outdoors, including on the bus, all areas of the building, during recess, allied arts, during pickup and drop-off times, and during before and after-school activities. Designated spaces for brief mask breaks in the classroom and outside have been established. Another mitigation strategy that we have put in place is social distancing. Classroom layout and seating arrangements have been designed with social distance guidelines. Using guidance from the Harvard Path to Zero and through consultation with the North Shore Health Department, a guideline of three feet has been established in grades K through five. That three feet of distancing is also coupled with the adherence to the cohort model, and a guideline of six feet has been established in grades six through eight. While especially with young children, we cannot guarantee social distancing one hundred percent of the time. In our primary school structures, these guidelines will be followed and followed wherever possible.
Proper ventilation is important. Our maintenance department has conducted air quality testing at both buildings, and we're proud to say that our buildings meet ASHRAE standards for temperature and CO2 levels. Humidity is an air quality variable that will continue to be monitored. Air purifiers will be placed in all classrooms at Parkway and within designated spaces at Glen Hills. It's important to note that Glen Hills is equipped with a central air system that allows for the regular rotation of air. Teachers at Parkway are also encouraged to open windows in their classrooms throughout the day when possible. We will encourage the staff, students, and visitors to wash their hands with soap and water and/or to use the hand sanitizers that will be available throughout our buildings. The following list includes timeframes in which we will encourage people to wash and/or sanitize their hands. Upon the arrival at school, before putting on and after removing face masks or face coverings, before eating snacks and meals, when transitioning between indoor and outdoor activities, and when transitioning from one space within the building to another.
Cohorting is another mitigation strategy that will be used. Cohorting seeks to group students and keep them together for large portions of the day to limit contact between groups. In grades K through five, a class cohort will be used when possible. The exception to this will be in specialized academic supports. In grades six through eight, cohorts will be used where scheduling permits. Again, that may be interrupted during specialized academic supports or specialized academic courses and within the Allied Arts. Creating a safe environment in light of COVID is much like Swiss cheese pictured below. Research indicates that strategies of mitigation are what will keep our students and staff safe. We know our schools were not designed for a pandemic, so we layer these mitigation strategies to ensure that we are reducing the possibility of infection. Throughout our plan, we sought to ensure that when one mitigation strategy is not in place, that we would rely on others to reduce the holes or gaps in those mitigation strategies that will follow for a safe return. Those layers of safety measures include self-screening, universal masking, social distancing, cohorts, limiting visitors, ventilation enhancement, increased hand washing and sanitizing routines, additional cleaning and disinfecting, contact tracing, and adherence to quarantine guidelines.
Our presentation today outlined the general framework for our learning models and the mitigation strategies that will be used throughout our building. While we did not spend time overviewing each individual system and routine, we wanted to share the guiding principles and approach that inform all of our decision-making. It is important to note that many of the systems and routines in this document are intertwined and have implications that reach far beyond that individual routine. Using that Swiss cheese model layering mitigation strategies is the approach that we took to everything, from hallway transitions to fire drills. We encourage all of our families, staff, and community members to spend some time reviewing the reopening plan for more information and reach out to us if you have any questions.
We want to foster a successful start to a new learning model. Therefore, beginning the week of March eighth, both schools will stagger their attendance, layering in additional grade levels as the week progresses. At Parkway, early childhood K-four and K-five students will attend on March eighth, while early childhood through first-grade students will attend on March ninth. K-four through second-grade students will attend on March tenth, and all grade levels, early childhood through third grade, will attend on March eleventh. The same thing will occur at Glen Hills. On March eighth, fourth-grade students will attend school. On March ninth, fourth and fifth-grade students will attend. On March tenth, fourth through seventh-grade students will attend, and on March eleventh, all grade levels, fourth through eighth, will attend.
In order to accommodate welcoming students back, we will be focusing on a transition plan that will take place during the week of March first through March fourth. The areas that will need to be trained are health and safety training for our staff, final building preparations, technology updates, the transfer of academic records to teachers and sections, establishing and sharing bus routes, specialized services schedules, classroom tasks such as assigning lockers and seats, and family communication from teachers.
We would like to thank all of our stakeholders, our families, our staff, our community members, our school board, and Dr. Moser for your ongoing support and encouragement as we prepared for a strong return. Your participation, input, contributions, and flexibility have been an integral part of the process. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Moser, giving him an opportunity to guide us through the next steps in the process. Thank you.
Thank you to all the co-chairs and your work and your presentation this evening. Very clear and very, very helpful as we discuss the recommendation and the rollout of the reopening. A few comments before I turn it back to President Franklin and the school board. First of all, last night at our regular monthly school board meeting, Dr. Kilton, Dr. Shannon Kilton, presented a report from the North Shore Health Department that was very positive, that was a very appropriate lead-in concerning health and safety, leading into this recommendation tonight. Also, I do want to name the facilitators who were helping the co-chairs and our staff and faculty. Jim Beckman, our our operations director, Dr. Shannon Cannon, a Kilton, Dr. Kilton, I mentioned before, has been giving regular monthly health reports. And I'd like to also thank Jenica Westfall for the role she played as a facilitator in this process. Mr. Franklin and the school board, at this particular point, I would like to turn it back to you for questions or comments from the the school board for us that will help with any areas that we need clarification, whether it's for the school board in your voting this evening or any questions or comments you may have that would be helpful to the staff, the faculty, or parents. So, Mr. Franklin, let me turn it back to you and your work with the full school board.
Okay, well, I know that our board probably has many questions. Just to kick it off, let me ask a question about the commitment that right now people have, and I think that you addressed in the presentation. If someone responded to the survey that they wanted to remain virtual, or if someone responded to the survey that they wanted to go back to the school, but they looked at this presentation and they said, "Wow, I really love that." Or, you know, maybe the worst-case scenario, to the contrary, "Oh, I didn't love that," and they changed their minds. Do we have the capacity to allow them to change their mind at this point? I mean, in other words, you know, we have seventy-four percent of people who said that they want to go back to school. If it goes a couple percent one way or the other, do we have the capacity to take more people in or to put more people virtually, more students virtually?
All of the reopening plans, including all of the mitigation strategies that we're able to secure in each of our routines, were based on that hard survey data. We would not be able to accommodate families who would like to switch from virtual to in-person. However, families who would like to switch from in-person to virtual, we will be able to accommodate. This is really important as it gives us the space to ensure the social distancing in the classroom and also the ability to maintain staggered schedules and other factors. And so families who opted for the in-person learning can switch to virtual, but not the other way, unfortunately.
Okay. And by the way, I saw the statistics on the students who want to go back to school, and the number was roughly around that seventy-four percent. Are those numbers the same at Parkway and at Glen Hills? Is one school going to have a greater return than the other?
I can answer that. It does vary slightly by grade level. I would say that overall, at Glen Hills, we are experiencing, we have some grade levels that are near seventy-four percent, and then we also have some that are near eighty. So it kind of varies from grade level to grade level, but I do feel that it is consistent between the two schools that demand to return to in-person learning.
Now, I'm just going to go until someone else on the board interjects. Danielle, you're on mute. Unmute yourself.
Okay, I've done this before. Just a quick follow-up to your question since you were talking about the the family survey. So that percentage you're using, the seventy-four who want in-person to the twenty-six about, how many, what percentage of families in our district does that number represent? So how many respondents?
We have nearly one hundred percent of responses. There are only about twenty students that we are accounting for. Those students have, I apologize, is that not the question?
Sorry, not, not, no, I'm sorry, not the family commitment. I'm talking about, we're talking about the desire for families to have in-person or virtual. I believe that number was family survey. Oh. That is reflecting family commitment, not family. Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Thank you for clarifying. Got it.
All right, Molly?
Yeah, a quick question. Please excuse me if you answer this. For the twenty or so families that you haven't heard from, is the default that they are in-person? Or is that correct? Okay.
The default is that they are in-person, and we are continuing our efforts to reach out. I imagine that we'll be doing some home visits and things like that in the coming. However, we are accounting them because of class size for in-person. And remember, those folks can switch to the virtual model, so we're not locking those last twenty in because they haven't received the communication from us. We're going to make sure that one hundred percent of our families have that communication and are able to make that choice. That is very important to us.
Brilliant. I appreciate that default. Thank you.
I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, we talked about Allied Arts and and things like music. We talked about learning concurrently. So it's sort of a multiple question here, but with gifted and talented a resource or with band and orchestra, how are those being dealt with? And then also, how do those activities, how are they addressed, you know, with concurrent learning at Glen Hills?
So in terms of looking at the resource period, there is a resource period or office hour period that is built into the concurrent schedule, which provides students the opportunity to partake in those gifted and talented classes or to receive additional supports during that resource time. In terms of our concurrent schedule around the Allied Arts, those classes would be equipped with the equipment needed in order to be able to have those students participate in those opportunities through a concurrent model. There is also the ability to, for us in the schedule, to be able to run an A-day, B-day schedule with Allied Arts and with band, choir, orchestra, and general music.
Okay. So I mean, the bottom line is that if kids remain virtual, they're still going to be able to participate in those activities as well.
Yes, absolutely. One of the advantages and part of the reason that we looked at the concurrent model is the ability for us to provide the same level of access to our students who are at home. We knew that once we saw that our percentages were causing space concern within the upper grades in terms of being able to adhere to distancing, the only other option to that would be to look at an A or B day model, which then minimizes students' access to all of those opportunities of learning.
Okay. All right. And then add to the gift, and I suppose, you know, the follow-up to that is also, you know, gifted and talented, but also special education. I know that there are a lot of people, and look, we're talking about equity, and our equity conversation is about a lot of different things. It's about special education. It's about different statuses and backgrounds. But, you know, I know there are a lot of people who are also concurrent about making sure that their gifted and talented needs are met. Are we going to be continuing with GMT offerings during this last, you know, three months during this trimester? How's that going to work? And because I know normally, for example, Ms. Morally has a resource class and you get to tell the people in it, but there are different grades. And I'm just trying to understand with a class like that where people might have grade levels, I mean, how is it scheduled?
So one of the ways in which we're looking at scheduling that is by looking at a staggered schedule of our alliedites and band, choir, and orchestra and general music classes on an A-day, B-day provides us with an opportunity to build in a resource period, and it is able to align. I guess if you're kind of looking at, I think about schedules and blocks, it's able for us to align those times. Mrs. Morally sees fifth and sixth graders right now, so they would be blocked with the same resource time, so she would still be able to see those students. And then we would also have students blocked in grades, I believe, or sorry, five and six, she sees at the same time, and seven and eight. So what we would do is block those times, and because it is a resource period, Mrs. Morally would be able to engage with those students virtually in the concurrent model as they remained in their classrooms, so we would not have lots of transitions and mixing of groups.
I have a quick question, particularly for on behalf of the teachers at Glen Hills. Teaching concurrently until you've done it, you really don't, can't grasp what it's like, and it's not easy. I'm wondering if there are, first of all, opportunities for coaching for teachers throughout the rest of the school year so that if they need new tips or strategies that they have either professional development or some coaches on hand that will kind of guide them through that.
I have been in contact with Jenica Westfall, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and I am going to ask her to speak on some of the connections that she's already been making in order to make sure that our teachers have adequate training to implement what is now what you've referred to as another model of teaching, which is new to them this year.
Thank you. Yes, I've reached out to a number of different professional development organizations, but currently I have a meeting with CISA, the Personalized Learning Center through CISA, who does training around concurrent teaching. And we're going to be meeting for some professional development that we can provide for staff and some continued PD throughout the trimester. We also have some scheduled technology training as well in place because we have some different tech needs, of course, as we go to this concurrent model. And we have made kind of a package of the needs of those tech pieces to make this go smoothly for teachers. And the other thing to think about too is our teachers are really good at virtual teaching now, and they're also really good at that face-to-face. So now we just got to figure out how we put those two together to support those students and really have some, and they're the experts too, right? So have some discussions about, you know, what is, you know, what in certain content areas, you might be thinking about a flipped classroom or doing some station work or doing a whole group rotation. So just thinking about, you know, a think tank with the teachers and kind of building that together. So that's kind of where we're going with that.
And do the teachers have some sort of medium or place or clearinghouse where they can share like their successes and their ideas so that they can learn off of each other during this process?
Our ongoing work and Our ongoing work and, and professional learning with staff on our Friday, um, asynchronous days would be part of that collaboration time and time for them to partner and share and be able to utilize that time um, to go, um, towards successes. Um, also in addition to that, our grade level team meetings, we always kind of follow a PLC model in which we're looking at what is working with students and how do we know? And so really helping teachers, um, draw out and then I can share over grade levels, different strategies and ideas. Um, we also maintain a Google Classroom where we can put, um, information in there as well for teachers.
Right. I think it's gonna be really important that, 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 um, there's real leadership in that because I, teachers are gonna be in the weeds doing this. And then they're, they're going to reflect at the end of the day and go home. And, and so I think that that reflection and sharing needs to be really intentional from the district level so that they have an opportunity to kind of take a step back and share what is working and what's not working and, and collaborate. Um, so that they can continue being successful in the classroom.
Can I just follow up, Molly? I, I, I've, I wonder if we're also partnering or talking to other districts who are implementing concurrent learning such that, you know, we can learn from what's working and not working in other districts. Are we forming those relationships too?
Yes, um, we are. I, I spent the day really working with Mapledale, Indian Hill, Fox Point, Bayside and Nicolay. So, um, and I also have, you know, peers in other, um, districts as well. Such as, you know, Cedarburg and Menominee Falls, who's been doing concurrent teaching as well. Um, so getting a lot of information around it of what's working really well for them. Um, which is kind of nice for us to, you know, to be starting this a little later. Um, so that we're, we're gonna kind of miss some of those barriers that they had during their process of starting this.
I have a question, if it's okay.
Please.
But separate topic. I wanted to talk about the gating criteria, which I, I have had, you know, the opportunity to talk to administration about already, but I think it's important that, um, that the community sort of gets to understand. Uh, if you could just explain the new gating criteria that is in, um, the reopening plan, but was not in the slideshow presentation. Um, which I believe you mentioned is what's being used in almost all of the North Shore school districts right now. But could you just talk about that and how it's different from what we were utilizing before? And sort of why we're moving to this, if, if that's all right?
Um, I'm wondering if Dr. Kilton is on, if you wanna explain some of the gating criterias, you have the most familiarity with it.
Um, I sure am. So the gating criteria that's in the handbook is the same criteria we've been using in the presentations. The burden, the number of new cases and the percent positivity. Specifically, the guidelines are most focused on the burden and the percent positivity, which as mentioned last night, are both in good line with reopening schools at this point. Um, our data last night showed our burden rate at seventy-eight, which is moderately high, but obviously trending downward big time. And our number of new cases were five in the last week and percent positivity was one point five percent. So, um, we will continue monitoring the same metrics. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
I think in reference to that, um, Danielle, in terms of looking at what, um, the question that you had is the table one recommendations based on metrics. Um, Dr. Kilton, the additional criteria for determining learning models that was also introduced by the North Shore Health Department in terms of percent positivity, um, is really looking at sort of the overlap of some of those criteria rather than just focusing on one measure. So, um, looking at the fact that in the yellow area, if the five to ten percent positivity rate is there for a fourteen-day period and it's trending downward, that can be considered for a moderate level. Um, in which, in the initial guide, um, that came out this summer, those guidelines did not indicate that as table two additional criteria had not been established at that time.
Correct. And, um, for the months that we've been talking about this, we've just not focused on table too much because we have not been close to table two. We finally are at an area where table two applies to us. Um, because our metrics have actually downward trended enough that those numbers actually apply to us. So the table two criteria is actually applicable to what we're talking about now.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question? I, I just wanted to, uh, double back because Molly, you'd made a question, uh, you'd, I made a statement about concurrent learning. And, you know, our school district has been committed to making sure that we have a vibrant virtual option. And I think it is what I heard. I think that what I heard is that we're gonna maintain that commitment. In, as a parent of someone who is in seventh grade, there's gonna be concurrent learning that's applicable. And the first thing I'm worried about is, you know, if someone has a kid who is, uh, in a concurrent learning class and they're going to be a virtual student. How does that student interact with the teacher beyond the concurrent learning? In other words, I understand it's challenging. Are there gonna be other opportunities for interaction with teachers? Um, you know, a, a, and I guess I'm wondering how that would work out. I mean, if Friday may synchronous day, for example, is there a possibility of having, uh, you know, uh, special meetings with teachers in person for the virtual learners? Um, which by the way, might be a great thing to do since, you know, even if they are coming into the class and being part of the whole class, might be nice to meet your teachers, uh, the school here as well. I'm just curious, uh, what additional support is gonna be for virtual? Cause I am concerned that, you know, there is kind of a tilt in the direction. There's a lot of people who are legitimately, uh, you know, going to need to keep the kids virtual for the remainder of the year as well.
Right. And in some of our conversations with, um, um, Ann Christensen from the North Shore Health Department too, and considering what mitigation strategies might be in need to be a place for our fall of next year. Um, one of the areas that we need to take into consideration is that until COVID is truly under control in our communities, those, uh, students who are medically fragile may always have to access an option like this until we're in a better space. So, um, thinking about that, what I feel has the opportunity is we look at having the right resources. So some conferencing tools and some mic gain to make sure that our students can hear is that if I were a student who was learning concurrently, I would have the option to see some of the learning that my teacher is doing. And part of the virtual learning that our teachers have been doing has been short pieces of explicit instruction with time for students to group and practice, right? So if you think about that model, if I'm a teacher delivering a concurrent lesson, I have the opportunity to be in front of my virtual students and my in-person students to be able to deliver those short pieces of instruction. And then when they're grouped, you have the opportunity to have a student who is at home group in with students who may be in person, um, via Zoom. And you also have the opportunity for small group work, which is a very common practice within both the middle school and four or five areas in which we would have opportunities for small group work in which a teacher may be working with two students who are in person as well as a student who is virtual. I think the piece that needs to be kept in mind is our teachers are also going to be in a place where they're trying to seek to maintain distancing from students. So the reliance on some of the technology tools that they have used through the virtual teaching are gonna be inherently present in the classroom still, um, as a means for safety for all involved. And so thinking about that kind of grouping, you have the ability to, um, in many ways, bring to life a little bit more in some ways what's been happening in a virtual model by being able to do this. Um, going back to, you know, the earlier comments though, that does take training. It takes combining, um, teacher knowledge around what they have learned about virtual teaching and what they know about in-person practice and making sure that those two are married.
All right, uh, Danielle, please.
I have a few more questions. Not shocking to anyone, right?
Did never apologize. You know, let me, I'm just gonna cut you off right there for one second. And I'm gonna say this to, uh, everyone who's on this call. Questions are really important. You may have something that someone else is afraid to ask.
Yeah.
Always feel free to ask a question. Obviously, is Bailey, you're a member of the board and I can't tell you not to either. But I, I just wanted to reiterate, we love questions. You know, it's really important.
May, may I just clarify, because I realized, um, President Franklin, that I didn't finish last part of your question, which was, will there be opportunities for students? Yes, during that resource time, I'm sorry. During that resource time, there absolutely will be times for some individual meetings as well as those times on Fridays. So you are absolutely, I just wanted to make sure I address that part, portion of your question as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Bailey, please.
My question is around scheduling and, um, you've talked about how we saw preference for, uh, you know, four-day full in-person. Um, and I was wondering if you could speak to your considerations and rationales for sort of landing on this four-day in-person, um, full schedule versus, you know, other options we've seen in other districts where you may have hybrid AM PM or, or AB days, um, and talk about sort of why that's what we landed on for this district. As opposed to something that, you know, could potentially reduce class sizes or avoid mealtimes and, and just where your heads were at getting to that decision.
I can lead and then people can feel free to jump in. Um, so when we look at our family data results, again, seventy-four point three percent indicating they, that they would like the in-person model and twenty-five point seven percent, um, virtual learning. It's important to note that if we were to go back, uh, to the beginning of the school year, uh, the option that was available to us as we looked at creating, uh, gating criteria was a virtual learning model. And so now as we're moving forward, we're adding in an additional second model, which is that in-person model. Um, so when we look at our staffing and the supports that we have in place, we're able to accommodate those two models. Um, hi- the hybrid model was the, the least selected when you looked at the survey results from our families. Um, also though, if you were to think about the fact that some of our students right now are learning asynchronously, that would add another layer and yet a third learning model into the mix. And honestly speaking, that would require more staffing and more supports to be in place to be able to efficiently and effectively lay that out. Um, and so that's how we landed on the, the two learning models.
In addition to that, um, if I may add, we also are considering families whose schedules may not permit them to, um, pick up in the middle of the day or drop off. Um, we do have a portion of our community, um, a large portion of our community that relies on school buses as well. Um, that is another factor. And so families cannot, um, necessarily simply pick up for lunch and, and then drop back off. Or, um, perhaps you have, you know, one parent working in the home, um, and needs to rely on, um, the, a full day model or full day daycare services.
Okay. I am just gonna go around the room because, uh, I know that sometimes what happens is of the questions spur, uh, some questions for other questions. And sometimes, uh, people think of something after someone else asks it. Um, so the board may very well come back to a couple of items, especially if there's a formal motion out here. But I'm just gonna go across the board real quick because if there's no immediate questions, I'd like to open it up to visitor.
I do, I do. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. I wanted to address meal periods because this was something that I had a lot of concerns around in which I was able to talk to you all about, but that I want to sort of, um, again, sort of for the benefit of all, get, you know, get into your heads about, about what you're thinking in terms of, of the, um, meal period. So I was hoping you could speak to, you know, why we are keeping, why you're looking to keep kids in the classrooms at the elementary, at the park, at Parkway versus perhaps using, utilizing the lunchroom and increasing social distancing. And talk about what you anticipate as being sort of the active eating unmasked. What do you anticipate being those actual sort of unmasked periods for eating as one part? And then just a follow-up about breakfast, maybe after you address that.
So we know that one of the biggest mitigation strategies, um, is the cohort model. And so our, our, at Parkway, the students will be eating within their classroom setting as a cohort. Era Mark is going to be providing a cart that will include the students' lunch choice options and be, be bringing that directly to the classroom setting, which then limits the congestion um, and the trans, um, the transitioning back and forth, for example, between a classroom and a lunchroom. But we also know that when we look at the size of our lunchroom and trying to accommodate all of the students that we have, um, it makes the most sense. And actually, research has, has now indicated, um, that it's actually better to have students eat within a classroom setting amongst the in, same individuals that are within their cohort that they're learning with throughout the course of the school day. Um, but I also think it's important to note that the timeframe in which masks would be off would really, um, be the active eating times. Otherwise their masks would be on. Um, and I don't know if you wanted me to move into the breakfast piece now?
Well, you also, I believe you, you had told me earlier sort of about what other mitigation strategies may be in place.
Yep.
Um, while, while folks are eating unmasked. And that did include some of the breakfast piece too, right?
Yep. So, um, when we think about other mitigation strategies, um, for example, at Parkway, we have access to be able to open up all of our windows within our classroom. Um, we also have air purifiers, um, that will be running within the classroom as well. Um, the recommendation is to do one or the other, um, during that timeframe in which the students are, are eating. So there, there are also, um, some strategies and some things that we can do within the classroom to ensure that proper ventilation is taking place during the timeframe that students are eating too. But when we think about, um, for example, the breakfast is another timeframe in which students have the opportunity to eat, um, and snacks are another timeframe that students have the opportunity to eat. I had talked earlier about staggering the attendant, uh, sorry, um, staggering the entry um, process for our students. And so one of the things that we know is that our families will have the opportunity to drop off students between eight-twenty and eight-forty. While our buses typically arrive at eight-forty, um, so we're gonna have a number of students who will be coming into the building and quickly going to their lockers and then quickly entering into their classroom setting. And then we're really predicting that it'll probably take about five minutes to be able to eat the breakfast that Airmark is able to provide for all of our students. Um, so again, they'd have that opportunity to sit at their table space to be able to eat their breakfast that has been provided for them and then be able to put their masks right back on. And the same would hold true of snacks as well. So the idea is when they're actively eating, that mask is off. Um, but that timeframe should be really small when you, when you think about what the day looks like. And then they would put it right back on as soon as they're done.
I would also like to add that for all of our procedures, including the cafeteria or the, the, um, eating in the classroom procedures, there is a health and safety training that we are providing to our staff and explicit lessons that we are teaching to students. So right now, um, we have the reopening guide that lays out the expectation, but by no means, um, you know, does that outline all of the pieces, um, that a teacher may have to consider. For example, hand washing is, is a piece in that lunch routine. If we look at the sample schedule, lunch is blocked for thirty minutes. Like Dr. Smith said, by no means should somebody have their mask off for thirty minutes, um, during that time. Part of that time is having the time to allow for spacing, to wash hands at the sink, to be able to socially distance, to grab their lunch choice, right? That time is very limited. That idea of active eating, um, will, will be, um, something that is taught. And so further detail and further training will be provided to both staff and students to ensure that, um, those guidelines are met. And so even though while masks are off, those other mitigation strategies are strong and in place.
And Ms. Young, just to confirm, Glen Hills, all grades will be eating in the cafeteria, but they will have assigned seating and they will be six feet apart. And, and you've made this decision. Could you just speak to that?
Yes, I can speak to the fact. So, uh, Parkway has the option to open windows and they are also receiving air purifiers as they have. Um, they do not have the same central air system that Glen Hills has. It's two different buildings. And so, um, one of the things to note about the cafeteria space at Glen Hills, it's a cafeteria and common space is very large. Um, it also has its own, um, air handling unit, which helps do the air exchanges to make them more frequent. So what we will be doing is there is a half an hour for lunch, but as Mrs. Umar explained, we are going to have a situation in which we will have to have kids wash hands, line up, um, line up in a staggered way, get a lunch from the lunch line and then proceed to a table. What we will be doing in the cafeteria is students would, um, be assigned seats. So then during that lunch period, they would be sitting at fifty percent capacity at the tables that are currently in there so that they could, we could extend the distancing that would take place. They would be with an assigned group of students who in grades four and five would be a part of their cohort model. Um, and then really in the older grades with six feet of distancing, um, the practice has been in other schools that if someone at that assigned lunch table were to become ill, then those students at that table would then be considered close contacts. But it would provide us with the space in which a whole classroom would not become a close contact, if that makes sense. Would then be considered close contacts, but it would provide us with the space in which a whole classroom would not become a close contact, if that makes sense. So you're really that the structure of the cafeteria provides us with more efficient ways to contact trace. As well as the ability to spread students out and distance them further away and to have better ventilation than they would in the classroom.
No, no, go ahead, please.
I I have a quick question about enforcement. I'm not talking about discipline per se, but enforcement of protocols now. Again, if a kid doesn't wear a mask right, I don't expect, you know, that person to be called to the principal's office. Or you're necessarily given a call home, you know, or anything like that. I I don't think kids. Ought to be punished for an occasional mistake, but I'm more concerned about. I don't know, supervising or having accountability for some of the activities. Making sure, I guess, that the staff is following through and if they see someone that they're saying something. But also with the busing, right? How we're gonna be accountable for busing because it sounds to me like about thirty students are gonna be riding the bus. And we wanna make sure that the buses are gonna be safe. And that means A, making sure that they actually follow through on the cleaning supplies that I think that, you know, we're responsible for. But also, you know, making sure that they put people on socially distant, that they wear masks. And do we have any strategies in place for how we address that? Because I think if there's one thing that we've learned in last year. It's that people don't like to be corrected on how to mask or socially distant. Too socially distant. So I'm just wondering, you know, if it's any thought to how we approach those issues.
I think in in speaking about that, the the first approach that we're gonna take is an educational approach in which we lay out very clearly the expectations for students. Those behaviors are new. They need to be taught within the setting very explicitly. This is how you wear your mask. This is how you take your mask off. This is how you eat with a mask, you know, and you remove it for active eating. This is how you walk in the hallways. And it is going to take all staff members to be on board and adhering to those. Pieces as as building level administrators. We have the ability to walk our buildings and to help reinforce and send that message. However, it does take every staff member adhering to those safety guidelines. To ensure that we have a safe environment. They too are a layer of 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 Swiss cheese in this, right? So and making sure that that is taken seriously. And a part of that is constant messaging around that, constant reminders around that. And I think too, thinking about the fact that the stakes are fairly high in in terms of safety. And we have to take that very seriously. And and that that message also needs to be sent to students and parents. And so it is a shared responsibility among all of us. So if we're in an instance where we have students who who can't. Get to a place where we can, we can create a safe atmosphere. We are going, and we we do have a way to teach them concurrently at this point. We do have a way to move to a virtual model. But that is not something, obviously, as you said, that we wanna move to for a slight slip up with a mask, right? We really wanna be proactive and educational in our approach in terms of working with students and helping to teach those things explicitly. So students can rise to that occasion because we know that they can.
Okay, you know, thank you. That that's that's really, it's a very detailed answer. And by the way, I'm just gonna say, oh, we'll go ahead. Give me one time, then I just, I wanna reiterate. Then I think this team is doing a fantastic job. And I really appreciate the time and the depth that each of you is giving to answering these questions today. I hope everyone else feels the same because it's very helpful for me. Not said, Ms. Bailey.
Yeah, I would second that. I really, I see how you guys have been approaching things from all angles and. Putting yourselves in the shoes of students and staff and walking through these days and. Trying to to make all those considerations and and way, you know, competing interests. So I appreciate that and all of this thoroughness. The last thing that I would wanna sort of touch on right now is. It's not in the reopening plan or the presentation. So I think it's important to talk about what are. What we're doing to accommodate staff who will have medical reasons for not wanting to work or to teach in person. So. So what accommodations are we making? What what policies are we utilizing around these requests? And what's the rationale for this approach? And I. Sure, Dr. Moser could probably maybe would wanna address this, but I think it's important to to put that out there.
Well, thank you, Ms. Bailey. First of all, I'll open with saying that. Our first plan is to have teachers are are highly qualified. In quality teachers in front of the students. And we need our students to teach. The present board policies will be utilized concerning any requests that come across. But again, I will say that the the parents and 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 the fellow teachers. And administrators expect that they're gonna be working alongside. Highly trained licensed professional educators in teaching our our students and we. We want that. I do not, I have, I will not, and I have not recommended to the board any new. Policies concerning. The. Request for medical leave. I have indicated to the staff that the. Approvals for working at home during the virtual instruction will be rescinded. In in based upon the board action tonight. Whether we're gonna open or not. And then i- if there are any requests that need to come in. We will start from ground zero on on that, on those requests. But I will not be. Making a request of the board to have policies that do not respect. The staff needs or do not respect the. The relationship that the school board has with the administrators and teachers. That will cause any harm in the future in trying to resolve a problem of having teachers presently. Working face to face during now with the reopening. I don't wanna create two or three other problems. In trying to correct one.
Can I ask you a leading question, Dr. Moser?
No leading questions, no leading question.
Hostile witness.
No, I just, I just wanna confirm something that that you had told me that we had discussed earlier was that any, any teacher or staff who has an approved. Medical reason or medical excuse for not teaching in person, that we will accommodate them through a virtual position. Though you cannot guarantee that they would be in the same, perhaps the same position or grade level. Is that correct, Dr. Moser?
What I, what I will say, because I don't wanna speculate in on any requests that are coming in. Is that present board policies, board policies, FMLA requests will be followed. And that if you're asking, if if someone says they wanna teach. Virtually, just saying that they're gonna teach virtually doesn't mean that we can accommodate that.
No, I'm talking about someone who's approved, has an approved medical.
Have to go through a. I don't wanna say rigorous, but it'll have to be a thorough medical. Statement of of their need. I have no intention of of firing of people at all. But I do need to say that we need teachers face to face with, and with seventy four percent of our. Of our students coming back face to face, mathematically, we have to make that work. And and I'll. I'll I'll make a statement. I will make this statement with your leading question. That the numbers have become much better. In 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 recent days, now that we are solidifying the plans. It appears that our faculty is stepping up to the plate, to use a baseball analogy. And that the the concerns, my concerns. Are diminishing rapidly over the availability of our staff to work face to face.
Okay. I can be done for now, President Franklin.
Well, actually, I I I know that there there's, we, I think we just passed the two hundred number here. So this is probably a really good segue. To go to visitor participation and to again underscore. The fact that your community, your residents are parents and their teachers and staff, and we wanna hear from you. And we don't want you shy away from asking any pertinent question. So. As I fill up some space to give people a chance, I would also point out that sometimes. Like I was saying before, someone might not ask a question that they think someone else is gonna ask. Ask that question if you have it. Let's make sure that we have those questions addressed. Yeah.
President Franklin, I just wanna say something because I'm. Before we go in, I will be turning my my camera on and off because I have water on my knee and I'm having a hard time sitting and standing. I don't want anybody thinking I'm rude or that I am not listening to you. I will be listening completely, but. Right now I'm in a lot of pain and I need to stand up and down. And I do not want anybody thinking that I'm rude. So please forgive me, but I am listening and I am paying attention.
Thank you very much and I I hope you you get better quick. All right then, so I'll just read it to you. Our meeting may require invoking formal board meeting rules such as visitor speaking participation will be limited to three minutes during. Agenda action items and visitor participation. So if someone has asked the same question before, we'd ask you to refrain from asking it again. If you can limit your comments to to three minutes, that would be helpful because there are so many people who are here.
I will be keeping track of time for you, President Franklin.
I will not be watching clock unless we.
I will be. I got it.
Okay, then you can be the official timekeeper. I see names up in a list and. I'm going to start reading off of them. The first one is Gretchen Kroll. And I hope I pronounced it correctly, if you can correct me and also give your address.
Thank you, President Franklin, and you did pronounce it correctly. I my my address is six zero three zero North Sydney Place in Glendale. I do want to just reiterate or say how much I agree with Molly Krychowiak's assessment of. That concurrent learning does need some support or teachers do need some support in the form of coaching. When it comes to concurrent learning, I would definitely back that one hundred percent. I guess my, one of the things that kind of a concern or a question that I have when it comes to that model. Is that with the students who have, who have, who are remaining virtual. We know that probably many of them might wanna be back in person, but maybe the adults in charge made the decision to keep them virtual. Wanting to know how those students will be scheduled into classes or into cohorts. Considering the fact that seventy five, approximately seventy five percent of students are going back in person. That means that there'll be only twenty five, so in a in a given number in a class of twenty students. There could be five that are virtual, let's just say. I guess I'd like, I would, I guess the question or the ask that I have is that staff. Who are making those scheduling decisions about which virtual kids go in which classes, consider that. Virtual kids need to be together in a class, not all together, but it would be less than ideal for. One student to be virtual while the the rest of his or her peers are all in person. I think it further kind of isolates them. And I'm I'm speaking from personal experience with. Some scheduling issues that are going on with our oldest technically. So I just would say to to be proactive, to try to make sure that. Students who are virtual, that there's at least one other virtual student in that classroom in 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 that. Situation with them.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone wants to make any response to that. If so, feel free to interject, but thank you, Ms. Kroll. And we will take that into account. Ms. Zimmens is next.
Hello, Gretchen, I just have to say you asked the exact question I was about to ask. So I think you read my mind. I have the exact same concern because my son will be staying virtual, my seventh grader. Sorry, I'm Patty Zimmens, five eight one nine. North Argyle Avenue. So I don't need to ask my question, but I do have a comment. I would like to address all the teachers on the call. And I just wanna say, you all are rock stars. I am so appreciative of everything you have done. Always, all all the years my son has been in this district, but especially this past year. Not only are you taking care of our kids. But you're also taking care of your own children and your own families through all of this. And now we're asking you to do even more for our kids. And so please know how very, very much you are appreciated. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Ellen Maurerman. And by the way, Ms. Kroll, if you can lower your hand.
Hi, Ellen Maurerman, nine fourteen West Tresalane, Glendale. Thank you, everyone. We we really appreciate the fact that we potentially are going back in. I'm a teacher in the consortium and we have gone back in as well. So I'm gonna kind of jump on Molly's comment as well. We did concurrent teaching and still continue to do so. The training is super important. But something that we do on our end is we have a producer. And that means there's someone on the stream. An adult on the stream while the teacher is teaching so that they can. They can help that teacher out, grab those questions as children who are in the virtual learning are often, otherwise you hear, Mrs. Maurerman, Mrs. Maurerman, Mrs. Maurerman. And you can't necessarily, you're like this, you're, it's like Jenga. And you're going back and forth. So please be aware of that. You won't know until you know that it's happening. The other piece of the puzzle is is that especially at Parkway, you're gonna see that. The parent is sitting next to them. Parents, I love you all. But please remember that the teacher's job is so very difficult. And. And I'm gonna try to say this as politically correct as I can. Please keep your side of the computer on mute. And please respect what the teacher is doing throughout the day. And if you have questions and concerns, please feel free to email them. And they will, of course, respond within that twenty-four hour period as we always do. But please be very mindful of that and know that. Because you're on that side of the computer, even though we could, we'll do everything we can to. Not see everyone in the room because of course, we have to hold true to that level of confidentiality that is always so so precious in our classrooms. But please remember that, you know, it's gold there and they're doing everything they can. And this is going to be a learning process. So thank you and please reach out to our district at any time. We appreciate that and we're here for you. I'm gonna jump on a couple of the things. I'm gonna do it quick so I don't run out of my three minutes. It's some things that came up. Nicolay is going on their Wednesday asynchronous, as are the other two feeder districts. So I'm curious as to. Why you have chosen Friday, when a lot of times those older siblings are caring for those younger ones to help out the working parent. So I'd like to kinda ask you to touch on that. And the other one is. I'm a PE teacher and forty-five minutes for a JK are is, I apologize, outrageous to me. The stamina for learning in person coming after being virtual for ten months. It's gonna feel like day one for at least two weeks straight. So please know that that's gonna take a little bit of time. In PE specifically, those masks, they're going to need those mask breaks. So please be aware of that as well. And if it's on the table and you haven't discussed it, please allow them to take their masks off when they're outside for PE. Super important because they're trying to work on their breathing and everything. And you might find this in the classroom as well. The breathing, it does get tough over time, even with air purifiers. So please be aware of that. Yeah, one more. I know, I heard the ding. I got one more. Please be mindful of your special ed kids. A lot of them will remain, my guess is a lot of them will remain virtual because. Their bodies are immunocompromised in some degrees, some will come in. But think about how that transition looks when they're virtual. Because virtual isn't always appropriate for a child with an extreme need. And so think about, again, like I said. With a producer or a co-planner or co-server on that on that stream with you and how that will look and how we can best serve them. Because I know that everyone just wants what's in the best interest of kids. So thank you, administrators. We appreciate you. And you've done a lot of great work. This was a really nice presentation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, Sam Holmes.
Good evening. This is Sam Holmes, eight three nine West Glendale Avenue. Wanted to touch on a few pieces. Um, wanted to just check in in regards to. How many teachers are gonna be in the buildings in regards to uh strain on teachers or faculty in general? When multiple teachers are out due to quarantine, uh I've seen that in the district that I work in where. Um, there's a big scramble to get adults into um classrooms whenever there's multiple teachers out and. What our subpool currently looks like, I know that's kind of a tough issue in Wisconsin in general. Um, and then my other two questions have to kind of do with quarantining as well as far as. Uh, how decisions will be made about classes or pods quarantining together versus when potentially the whole school may have to go virtual. Um, and then I noticed. Um, in the presentation that we received, the email kind of the symptom disqualifications. Meaning uh when a child would need to stay home, I know that the CDC kind of recently changed that to. Kind of creating the major symptoms of new taste, uh new loss of taste or smell or um difficulty breathing. As being the main two qualifying symptoms that would need to keep someone home. Is there a a specific reason as to why we're kind of using that larger list? Um, I mean, I totally, I totally understand if we do, but it just seems like there may be a lot of quarantines up front. Over those first few weeks if we stick to that list.
I'm losing him. I can't hear him.
Yeah, you were cutting out there just a bit, Mr. Holmes, um and but I do ask, um. If Ms. Young, uh if you had any, uh if you could answer. Mr. Holmes' questions, I I know you kind of broke out a little bit there.
Yeah, I know there was a question about quarantine and decisions around that. Um, based on the advisement of 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 our research as well as our advisement through the North Shore Health Department. In the situation in which we have three feet of distancing with students in classrooms in grades K through five. We would be looking at if there are positive taste case within those classroom environments that we would look at shutting down those classrooms for ten days for students. Um, teachers would have the option of after day um six of their quarantine. Um, to get a test, and if they had a negative result, they would be able to return to work a little bit sooner. Um, of course, teachers would have the options to teach at home as well. Students would have the option to learn at from home during those moments. Of quarantine for an entire class. When we're looking at the upper grades due to the fact that students will both be co-horted and we will work work on maintaining six feet of social distancing within the classroom. Um, we can have and do have the ability to do some contact tracing in which we could limit those. Periods of quarantine to just those students who are in close contact with another student. Um, so those would be some of the options that are there. Um, in terms of the list of of symptomatic um of symptoms, I know that the new guidelines came out from the CDC. Um, I thank you for bringing that up. I do think it is a discussion. We also do have within our health offices, um information for our health office staff in terms of assessing students who may present as being ill at school. Determinations as to whether or not it's allergies or or common, common, you know, frequent. Um, medical needs versus potential symptoms of COVID. Um, so those will be some considerations. I believe those were the questions that I heard. If I've missed something, I apologize.
Yeah, the the first part was just in relation to um the burden on kind of staff in the building if multiple teachers are out. And whether or not we have kind of the subpool available within the district or enough adults available in the district to.
Yeah.
Make sure that there's someone in every classroom.
Why don't I try to start with that, what answering that question? Um, uh, last night at the school board meeting, uh the school board did authorize. Uh, the hiring of two supervisors, uh two additional supervisors for the Glen Hills. Middle School and two paraprofessionals for Parkway. Uh, they also, they also uh authorized uh. Uh, the hiring of additional staff, fill vacant uh vacant positions. Uh, that are uh within the budget. Uh, that were vacant during the virtual uh segment of our instructional period. Uh, and as the budget permits, uh the board has uh said they would like to have those positions filled. Uh, uh, when it comes to substitutes, that can be a difficult issue, uh quality substitutes. And we will be diligent uh in our efforts in retaining uh the best substitutes we. We can have. That that i- i- is a difficult issue. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we will not be working hard on our uh our efforts to retain the best subs. And we will need substitutes i- in the last uh three months of school. We we all know that as educators and as parents. Uh, but uh, uh, the board has given us the tools uh to do the staffing. Um, uh, according to our uh our budget. And uh, they've also authorized, they the two uh pair of professionals and two supervisors. Were authorized the last night through the reopening budget that the board has approved. That we're anticipating coming to the district through the Second Cares Act. Uh, even though uh the state of Wisconsin, the legislature. Uh, has not totally finalized how that money is being distributed. Um, uh, the board in uh and planning uh for the possible. For the possible reopening uh uh direction. Uh, has given me authority to implement this budget based upon their voting tonight.
Thank you.
May I, may I also add, and we have um asked in several different platforms. If there are any parents or community members who are interested in becoming a substitute teacher and have a bachelor's degree. We have several parents who currently sub in our district, um and 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 it's absolutely wonderful. Um, we will need to take a community approach to this. Um, I fully anticipate, it's it's an all hands on deck situation, right? I fully anticipate I'll be teaching K four one day. Right? I fully anticipate perhaps like I did in the spring where I took over um an entire social studies class. It, we really um do need our community to pull together. So if you need um any information about how to sign up, if this is something that you are considering. Um, please reach out to us and we can help you through that process.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick follow-up around that, the personnel additions that has come to me. So if we are not able to fill some of those requests of the personnel additions that the board. Um, approved preliminarily, uh. Is that going to be sort of a thinking on our feet scramble to figure this out? Have we, you know, how was, how will this current reopening plan? Be impacted and and how are we looking at filling in those gaps?
So our plan A is to fill those positions. However, in both buildings, we have plan B and C proactively. Um, again, that all hands on deck approach is very important. We have had some proactive conversations. With staff members, like I said, I'm fully prepared. Um, we may need to ask folks who operate in different capacities. Um, to step in at times because we all are here to serve our students. Um, to and so um to ensure that learning still occurs for these three and a half months of school, this all hands on deck is going to be our reality.
Okay, thanks.
And uh I will then call on Ms. Van Leer.
Hi, um, I apologize if I've, if anybody asked a question already, but. Uh, my address is six four four zero North Alberta Court in Glendale. Um, I was just asking, I know we briefly went over when K four goes back. And I did see the schedule for when Parkway, their their daily schedule, but um. I wasn't really sure or clear on what, if any, changes that the K four schedule will have. Cuz I see that. Monday through Thursday, but. I'm sorry, this is my first child with a K four, so I'm not really sure what it's gonna look like cuz she's never been in class. Is it still like A M P M type thing?
Yes, absolutely. Um, and our school board has really supported us with some additional um staffing approvals so that we can maintain. Those A M and P M sections that you have planned on and counted on. Um, we may make some slight adjustments um in the middle there at the dismissal for the A M and the arrival for P M, nothing significant. Just to allow for more time between the cohorts. However, please know that for all of our families, this is not the last communication you will receive from. From us. We plan on several follow-up communications, including communication from the teacher. We will make sure that um you have all of the information that you need um to prepare for the first day of school.
Okay, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Okay, um, our next person, I I don't know if this is your last name, it's Sandy Bu. And if I, I apologize.
Hi, this is Sandeep Buke. I'm at four eight four eight North Lightell Avenue. Uh, my question is that uh if a student opted for in-person a class. Uh, and he starts the in-person class, but for some reason, if he has to quarantine for a week or two. Can he then opt in for a virtual for that particular period and what will be the process to to go for virtual? Uh, for that particular duration.
That's a great question. In general, we are um not offering opportunities to drop in and out of the virtual model from day to day. That's not a model we can sustain. However, for those periods of extended quarantine. We are offering families the opportunity to join the virtual sections. Knowing that um here in the elementary classroom, the virtual assigned teacher. Maybe in just a slightly different place, but generally in the same unit. However, for those families who need to um quarantine for an extended time, you will have that option to attend virtually. That day-to-day drop-in is not an option. You cannot select a blended model um in that way. But in those situations, um we will permit that and communication between the teachers um will ensure that um a smooth transition occurs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Tracy Stettler.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tracy Stettler. I'm at five three six seven North Edgewater Lane uh right here in Glendale. Um, so I made a, I made a point to go to every single meeting that was held. For every single reopening, anything going on. I missed one meeting, which was the policy meeting cuz I didn't know what's going on. So I have a ton of questions. Um, I wrote a list, okay. Uh, for the three feet policy. Um, I understand where that came from and I understand why we are utilizing that, but I also see. That in the CDC, the very newly passed the time that we were planning, those CDC recommendations are very actively and aggressively walking that backwards. And so I'm wondering if it is worth our time to take a look at why and how they're walking that backwards. So that we might more closely align to what the CDC's recommendations are, considering we have one of three different manuals coming out. For uh further recommendations with opening schools. Um, uh, that that is a big concern for me. Cuz I don't know how children between the ages of four and eleven are going to be able to, well, eleven, you'll get there. But the younger ones definitely are not, are going to have a a hard time, I feel like. Differentiating between three feet to their peers and six feet from their teachers. Um, and so I have some pretty big concerns around a three-foot policy. I also, basic math kind of puts us in a situation where we're, if we're looking at eighteen to twenty-one students per classroom. That even a day of uh uh spacing of six feet could not be adhered to. There's not physically enough. Physical space in the room in order to create that social distancing element that we are driving for. And so I kind of have some concerns around the level of children, the more children we have, the higher risk that we take. Uh, with exposures, the higher risk we take with exposures, obviously. Uh, leads further. I also have some concerns about why March eighth. We're giving our our teachers who become eligible for the vaccine on March first, seven days to get that done. And then they'll be in school for two weeks, then we have spring break, and then we go into our state and start testing. I don't know that March eighth is the best choice for this particular opening. I feel like and according to your own survey data, that giving our teachers the opportunity to become vaccinated. Is not only a very sound decision as far as health and safety is concerned, but it's also a very sound decision as far as the mental health. And welfare of our teachers at large. I think that would be a huge gift if we can delay this even even until after spring break to give them that opportunity. To become vaccinated. Um, like many other people on the call, I have some huge concerns about concurrent learning. Uh, concurrent learning has been studied deeply by some of the best universities around the world, and it is largely been. Been uh known to become one of the worst formats for a virtual student to continue learning in, which is quite difficult. Um, I have, uh, Ms. Maurerman was brilliant in her statement about having a parent or producer. On our concurrent models for our virtual students. One of the things that I'm finding with my Nicolay children is that the isolation, the isolation of being in a room. Uh, while watching your friends go to school in person is 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 a bigger element than I ever could have imagined. And I think that there are steps that we can take preemptively. To uh kind of stem that and make it easier for our seventh and eighth graders. Um, I also think that all. Teachers that are dealing with concurrent learning need to get themselves a Brittany here.
I'm sorry, but uh if anyone can.
I have just a couple of other things. Could I just, a couple of other things?
I would love to give you some time, uh but I I'd really like to get some answers cuz you're asking a lot of questions and. I don't want people to forget what they are and and not be able to answer them, so let me suggest. Uh, and then uh, if there's no additional uh participation, if you have a follow-up that hasn't been commented on before. Begin the cross that bridge. I just want to make sure that. Well, uh, add some.
Not muted. It's it's kind of hard. I don't know.
I appreciate that very much. I know I'm ready.
Can someone who is not muted with the background noise please mute? Thank you.
Terrific. I think we've gotten that. And then I I I would go back to uh our our team leaders here. Um, I I don't know if who wants to take uh Ms. Stettler's questions. Um, and uh i- is I've recorded them, there was a question about the social distance and the differentiating uh. The differences as a young child, uh, there's a question why we decided on March eighth. Um, and to wait till after break, and then. I I know we've already discussed concurrent learning, but I didn't know if there was any follow-up to that question as well.
Let me, President Franklin, if I could, I I I would appreciate, and I'm I'm glad the question was asked about the March eighth starting date. Uh, the March eighth starting date was was selected for a multitude of reasons. Let me just try to hit a couple. Uh, it's uh a- at the trimester, end of marking period, it's beginning of a new period to uh conclude the school year. Um, and uh it it appeared to be very timely. Uh, it also appears to be very timely to start on March eighth, uh to give us a a period of time to have the ki- kids come back. And then you can take a break, uh you can you can rest and 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 the teachers can uh can assess what is going well. The parents uh in working with their children. We think the timing is uh is is just perfect uh to bring the kids back. Uh, a third reason is uh dealing with our standardized testing. The standardized testing uh in two thousand twenty-one needs to be done uh onsite. We have, even though. Uh, uh, if the school district is uh virtual, we have to bring the kids back uh onsite to do the testing. It's a good idea to get the kids used to being in school before they do their uh their 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 testing. So uh, and maybe a fourth is uh, I think all of us as educators are anxious. To uh to see as many of our kids back in school face to face. It's exciting. Uh, I view this as an opportunity uh to do what we have committed ourselves to in our lives as educators. Uh, and uh I I think this is a great opportunity to get back into the swing of things. We understand the safety issue. Uh, we are very cognizant of it. It applies to all of us. And so uh, uh, the the March eighth date was considered um. Uh, a great deal of thought was given to it, and uh, we've, with the board action tonight. we've had a great deal of time, as you've heard, as the school board and the community and parents have heard, there's been a great deal of work leading up to tonight and making the recommendation. But there'll still be time between today and March 8th that can further assist with a planning and preparation that does need to take place.
Okay, and then I think that we covered that. I didn't know if anyone else had anything else to add.
I think Jim Beckman can probably cover the, the social distance and spacing, I believe.
Thank you, Ms. Vukovic. I would invite Ms. Stettler to stop over at Glen Hills one day and we would absolutely show you how we can socially distance six feet apart the upper grades and three feet the lower grades. They do fit in our classrooms. Our classrooms are large and we can do that. We've removed quite a bit of furniture from the classroom, so there's just desks in there now and the teachers, obviously workspace. So we can accomplish our six and three feet very, very easily. And I think Ms. Young has got a plan and it's, it looks good. And we've got yardsticks and tapes and we're marking things off and measuring it as it goes. So I feel very confident that we can reach those, those goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman. And just to add to that, when you mentioned the, the three feet of distancing, we know, and, and I believe Mrs. Umar and Dr. Smith both indicated this in terms of our younger learners, that the reality, six feet apart is, is why we default to a cohorting model rather than adhering to that six feet. So when we talk about that Swiss cheese and the layering of mitigation strategies, we know that the mitigation strategy of six feet for our youngest learners are going to be very difficult to maintain. Therefore, we layer in the cohorting to reduce contact and the masking to, to deal with aerosols and the ventilation to deal with aerosols. So those are the layers that we put in place because they're practical within a school setting and we want to assure that we have those things in place that it can actually be worked through. In terms of students knowing the difference between three feet and six feet from an educator, absolutely, you make a very excellent point there. It is going to be really on our educators to help with that distancing because as an adult in the room, you know what that is, so you can help guide and instruct children to know where those, where those places will be. And we also know that close contact is for over 15 minutes in that closed space. And so those moments of needing to be near a child to perhaps comfort them or, or instruct them can happen, but they need to be very brief and our staff are, are equipped and, and can work through that and help students understand that.
If I could address the vaccination question. I've done extensive research with the CDC guidelines and I'm just going to read the quote exactly from the CDC. It says, "Access to vaccination should not be considered a condition for reopening schools for in-person instruction." Even if every one of our teachers were vaccinated right now, we would still need to continue mitigation measures for their foreseeable future, including wearing masks in schools and physical and social distancing. So even if everyone is vaccinated right now, we would still have to follow all the safety guidelines and protocols. So, and I listen to Dr. Fauci every day and I'm sure many of you do. He reiterated the same thing today, that vaccination should not be considered the condition for reopening schools.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next person is Ms. Carrie Zytal.
Hi, everyone. Thank you again for just giving us this opportunity to speak and ask questions and share concerns. It is very much appreciated. I will always continue to advocate for our amazing staff. I have a really deep concern, especially for grades K through five, those classroom teachers who now have a lot more additional time face-to-face in their classrooms, which means they have less prep, they have fewer breaks, they have longer days. And it really needs to be, their wellness needs to be continued, to be addressed and, and not just talk the talk, but we really need to walk the walk when it comes to those classroom teachers. And I deeply concerned about that. Fourth and fifth grade, they always seem to be kind of the, the middle, the middle group where they're elementary model in a middle school setting. I have a fourth grader, so of course this is even more concerning to me. They always kind of get the short end of the stick. So right now, our fourth and fifth graders are still in that three feet of distancing, which does not adhere to CDC guidelines. They also have lunch in the classroom, Glen Hills where windows can't be opened. They also have concurrent, teachers are teaching concurrently, 22 kids in a classroom. I would implore you to maybe reconsider fourth and fifth grade and some of the, the issues there. I would also implore you for meals, eating lunch that K through five are not in classrooms, that there has to be a way to find a place for those grade levels to be six feet of social distancing while they're eating and they're actively eating without masks on. One of my questions is why is fourth and fifth grade a concurrent model? And that there is not a designated virtual teacher for those grade levels? And I will, this is like maybe a little bit of a dig, but this goes back to why we are reducing fourth and fifth grade to four classroom sections when there, they really should be five sections. If that hadn't been done over the past several years, we maybe wouldn't have to be kind of lumping fourth and fifth grade and making them work in all these different situations. And lastly, I just want to ask or kind of ask and give a perspective for six through eight. I know the seventh grade group this year is very large. In one of the reopening presentations, it looked like 50% of seventh grade families would need to choose virtual to make the distancing work. So I'm just concerned about those grade levels and how we're going to make sure that there's six foot of social distancing in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I think that's all I have.
Okay, so.
Oh, that was perfect. You had one second. That was good. Yeah.
I thought Mr. Beckman was priming to answer part of that question, so if he wasn't, I'll skip. But, and I'll defer to Ms. Young.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much for your questions. They were excellent. I appreciate them. So in the fourth and fifth grade classrooms, all students at Glen Hills will be eating in the cafeteria in order to be able to maintain that six feet of distancing. So I know earlier in our discussions, we looked at possibly having them eat in the classroom, but after review of the classroom space and talking with Mr. Beckman about the capacity for airflow within the cafeteria, as well as the ability to move students six feet apart, all students at Glen Hills will eat in the cafeteria. In terms of teacher schedules, our teachers will continue to receive, you know, their prep and lunch times as, as planned within a schedule. We know that it is important for our teachers to have that time be honored. And so just wanted to make sure that you're aware that the schedule does account for those pieces. In terms of thinking about the section size in fourth and fifth grade, you are correct in, in your assessment of the fact that with four sections, we are in a situation in which, when I look at the percentage of families that are interested in returning to in-person learning, that does bump up those numbers to be much greater. So if I were to essentially pull out one teacher of four to maintain a virtual model, that would put our class sizes in a way that we could not maintain distancing and they would not, they would be over the amount that we are looking for in order to do that with the physical space in the classroom. That leads us to the concurrent teaching model at Glen Hills, which also in grades six and seven, you are correct, we have larger class sizes. We do have five teachers at those grade levels, but we also will be pulling up teachers from other areas to help support the concurrent model so that we can break those students into other learning spaces to ensure that we can adhere to the distancing. So for example, a seventh grade that now is five sections might have six. We might have a teacher from another area of the building be up into a space. They would be engaged in concurrent learning while there's an educator with them in that space. If that helps answer that question. And those are some of those logistical pieces of why we landed on a concurrent model.
Okay, and I think that we covered all of that. So let us move on to Ms. Murray.
Hi, my name's Joby Murray. I have kids at Parkway. My address is 5523 North Navajo Avenue. So a couple of things, kind of what are the chances of our kids having to get new teachers through this program and then kind of when will we know? It's kind of a big concern with having to get new teachers. And then also with devices, will the kids, I have a K4 and K5 kid. Will they be expected to bring their iPads back and forth every day? And also like what is kind of the time that they're going to be expected to be spending on the devices while they're in school? Versus being actively engaged with a teacher? Does that make sense? Hopefully.
Okay, I can answer that. So the idea of teacher changes weighs heavily on us because we know that that has a big impact. And so Dr. Smith and I have worked to do our best to to minimize the amount of transitions that need to occur from a teacher to a teacher. Right now, in the way that the data presents itself, only those students who have opted for a virtual session and are not in the assigned virtual teacher's class would need to be moved to the virtual section. And that one teacher's class for those who have opted for in-person session would be redistributed among the other four sessions. It is not our intention by any means to just completely shuffle a class and a grade level. When the teacher's assignments and the student's decision match, in those cases, those students will stay with those teachers. What that looks like currently, based on the data that we have, 75% of students will remain in their teacher's class. We have had the opportunity to do that to try to minimize movement. I am watching the numbers. As we know, there are some, there is ability for in-person selection to switch back to virtual. And so I am watching those numbers in the event that we would need to open a second virtual section in a grade level and be able to do that. Right now, we are trying to minimize that as much as possible. That's very important to us. In regards to devices at Parkway, right now, we are collaborating with our tech team. Our, I can share our initial line of thinking, as long as you know that we will do some, some landing on that later. Our initial line of thinking is students at Parkway will not transport their devices, such as iPads, on a daily basis, that they would remain in the classroom. Okay? We would make sure to provide learning activities for those Friday asynchronous classes. But in general, students are not going to be going home with homework and projects that would require those devices. And when I think about cracked screens and iPads and all of that, we're trying to minimize that transition as well. In regards in the elementary here at Parkway for time on the device, time on the, the device for in-person students would probably be very similar to time that they spent before, for example, on DreamBox and things like that, in general, because there is a separate designated virtual teacher at Parkway. Did I head out all your questions? I anticipate, okay, I am shooting for possibly the end of next week, once we have more clarity and maybe some of those folks who are switching to the virtual model to have class lesson teacher assignments. My goal is the end of next week, if not early, that first week of the transition week. For those students who are remaining virtual and switching teachers, we may need to ask you to bring in your iPads. There's more work that can be done on the Chromebooks virtually, but there needs to be time built in to that transition week of March 1st in order for some of that device work. All students will not have to do that. For those who are attending in person, we'll be able to handle that once the students come. But we need to make sure that our, our students who are opting for the virtual model are set up from day one and that you're able to do that. So we may ask you to come in that week, and so we will be dedicating time to that.
Thank you. All right, then our next person is Ms. Sinclair.
Hi, my name is Erica Sinclair. My address is 3204 West Dakota Street in Milwaukee. My son is an open enrollment student. His name is Sal Malera and he's at Glen Hills. So I had two questions. One, I wanted to make a comment too. This has been a very informative meeting and I appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness and, and intentionality put into this meeting. Just for a second, I apologize if I missed this, but if anyone spoke on or can't speak on any requirements or availability for testing, both for students, families and/or staff, if that's been a part of the plan or part of the conversation at minimum. And the other thing is, someone had kind of alluded to this earlier, but I wonder if there's any self-care for the, the teachers in general built into this in forms of having someone, a professional to talk to. Definitely of course supportive of each other and it sounds like that's, that happens all the time. But, and just any other ways that, things that could be built into their schedule or offered to them for self-care, just to help them mitigate the, all of this. This is a lot.
Very good questions. Who would like to take?
The first question, I believe, was around testing. Was it, did I hear that accurately?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're referring to COVID testing?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Just, just as our minds lean towards oftentimes in, in education field, something else, right? I'm thinking forward testing, right? Okay, thank you. I appreciate you helping me out. So with COVID testing, we will obviously provide opportunities or locations for families that where they can go to do that, as well as we provide those opportunities for our teachers. In terms of, of self-care for teachers, you know, I, I believe, you know, it is my stance and the stance of my colleagues at Parkway that we care very much for our staff and want to make sure they're okay. We understand that this is a hard, this is a hard ask for many of them. We understand that they are going to need our care or encouragement, training, support. As part of our school district, we obviously have access to employee assistance program that we can help guide staff to, you know, when things become intense. But we know that this entire year, we've had to kind of take a stance of, of support, of grace and of community building as a group of adults to make sure that we are supporting one another. And I know that as a principal and I know that Dr. Smith and Mrs. Umar all feel very strongly that we want to make sure we continue to provide that layer of support for, for our staffs.
To my add, if you, if parents, if you have anything that we can do to help you, please let us know.
Thank you so very much for that. I really appreciate your thoughtfulness around that.
It was wonderful question. Thank you very much. Okay, our next participant is Amber Parham.
Hi, Amber Parham. I have a daughter who is in the 5K program at Parkway. I live at 1865 West Daisy Lane. I have a list of different things. First off, Tracy, Tracy Stettler, I believe. You had wonderful questions. I wish we would have let you go on because there were so many questions that you were asking that I had. First off, what is the max class size at Parkway? Like currently, prior to COVID, what would be the max class size?
In a particular grade?
Yeah, let's say 5K.
Outlined, though a hard max number is not set. There are some, some guidelines that are there. The class sizes are currently within those guidelines right now.
Okay, but prior to COVID, what would be the max class size?
We typically, we, we, we tend to run between 18 and 23.
Okay, so the class sizes right now would be approximately 21. So you're not really reducing that many kids per class because of the, the COVID, correct?
So what had, so we had five sections and by designating a virtual teacher, what that does is place the, the remaining students in that fifth section into the four sections. And so the classes are reduced from their own capacity and those students who opted for virtual learning. But then they need to be increased again, once you account for that fifth. But then they need to be increased again, once you account for that fifth section.
So about twenty-one kids per class. Also, the air ventilation system at Parkway, I know that it is not up to par like at Glen Hills. Do you guys have any plans to go through and add an airflow filtration system over the summer? So we don't run into these issues again because we all know that COVID will still be here. Um, also, um, with all due respect, Dr. Moser, I personally believe, and I'm sure a lot of other parents believe, that March eighth, as far as a start date is an awful time. If you really think that people are not going to be traveling on vacation or that they're just going to be home resting in between the start date and coming back from school, I think that that is just, I, I mean, I just think it's an awful start date. Also, I think that, I know that Shannon had said that the CDC guidelines, as far as it is not recommended in CDC for teachers to get their COVID shots. But if you're talking about a third of your staff would feel more comfortable having a vaccination before starting, that is a huge number of your staff that do not feel comfortable going into your schools to teach because they do not have a vaccination. And I think that, like, you need to respect that. And the teacher should be vaccinated before school starts because parents would be more comfortable and a third of your staff would be more comfortable. Um, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone else have anything that they want to add or to respond to?
The air ventilation would be
Would you like me to talk about ventilation? Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I can talk about ventilation at Parkway. We have added air purification units to every classroom at Parkway. They're a MERV thirteen unit. They will refresh the air in less than one hour. They can be set to run at timer. There's a timer set them to go on and off. When the ventilation unit isn't running, we are opening windows when appropriate to get fresh air in there. We're following the ASHRAE guidelines for a non-air-conditioned building. And I hate to admit, to tell you, but we don't have plans to, to add any different, different mechanical equipment to Parkway School this summer because, because of the age of the equipment that we have and what would need to be done, it would probably require a referendum within the district to, to change the ventilation system at Parkway School as it currently sits. I don't know if that answered your question, but that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, that's all the answers to my question. Unfortunately, you guys aren't being like, no federal funding, funding is coming in your way, like to be able to get the school up to par, correct?
We would need a million dollars to do that. And no, the federal funding hasn't come for a million dollars yet.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beckman.
You're welcome.
You know, I'd like to just ask a quick follow-up if I can, because I think that Ms. Parham's questions, obviously they're important to address and I think that, you know, they permeate, you know, a lot of these reopening discussions. And, you know, we are in a unique position, I suppose, at this point because we're the only school district in the North Shore community that is primarily virtual at this point. And I know that, because we had discussions on this, that you have talked to other school districts about how to reopen. Now, I'm not going to suggest in the world of absolutes and, and, and best case scenarios, you know, that we should sell for something relative. But nonetheless, we're not the only school that has facilities issues like this or complications, I should say. So in your, and maybe this Ms. Young, maybe this is Dr. Smith, I, I, I don't know who to direct it to, but I know that each of you has communicated with other schools in the area. And I'm curious, you know, how they've dealt with this situation? And, and if we are on track with what other precautions have been implemented in other districts based on the infrastructure that they're facing.
So I, I believe, kind of going back, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the, the Swiss cheese model of the fact that all school buildings have very different contexts, right? We, we operate in very different buildings. I mean, even the differences between Parkway and Glendale within this, the, or Glen Hills in the, in our, our district are very different. So when you look at that, you know, that is where like those guidelines and sort of the, the checklist kind of come in from the CDC planning guides that Dr. Mrs. Umar and I looked at, where, you know, where in, in these areas can we meet this and where can't we, right? And so if we can't, what are the other mitigation strategies that we put into place? So absolutely, the use of air purifiers in lieu of a central air system that can push air is going to be a needed component. You know, some districts that have central air areas are, are trying other upgrades that they are very costly. So mostly what schools are doing right now is finding ways to work around those issues like we are doing. So I do feel like we're on the right track. I feel like, you know, in talking with other districts and in particular, talking with facilities and maintenance of people in other districts, Mr. Beckman's knowledge of HVAC systems is highly regarded within that community. He knows those and understands those things and he is making the appropriate accommodations.
Okay, and, and I mean, I guess the long and the short of it is, based on the effort that you put in, do you feel like the appropriate mitigation strategies have been put in based on what we know today? Yes, I mean, you're both nodding, so I'll take that as yes.
I'll take that as a yes and I'll, and I'll follow this up to just also add that, you know, returning students and staff to school is, is, is a weighty, is a weighty leverage on all of our shoulders in terms of this reopening committee. We care deeply about the safety of children. We cater deeply about the safety of our staff. The last thing that I would do is, is put people at risk. You know, we, we work to that aim in our work as educators all of the time. And so, you know, taking those things into consideration and understanding that these, the, the measures in place are not, are not, you know, in the, in the spot that we would want all of us to be in the sterile environment, but they don't exist. So we do what we can with what we have. But there's no way that I would recommend or say that we were in a safe place if I hadn't fully vetted and looked at that and been very thoughtful in that planning.
Mr. Franklin, if I may make a comment. It, it, it is a fact that Mr. Beckman anticipated and analyzed the needs in the buildings. He came to me and recommended the air purifiers. He didn't wait for me to come to him. And he's, he anticipated that need. Plus, the school board has given Mr. Beckman an additional ten thousand dollars for additional air purifiers through their, their reopening budget that the board approved yesterday. So that as we move into the reopening, you've given the resources to Mr. Beckman to, to ensure the, the safety in our schools. So I, I, I want to give credit to Mr. Beckman. And, and it's gratifying to see not only an employee of the school district, but a resident of the community who anticipated the needs. And he came to me and said, this needs to be done. And I, I compliment him on that.
You know, I, I mean, I, and by the way, I think that there was foresight. These PP and these air purifiers are clearly not sharp rimage, you know, Walgreen special feel-good devices. And, and look, we're doing everything that we can to bring it to a point of safety, it sounds like. And I understand things aren't perfect. I also see that we're taking not just appropriate measures, but we're doing everything that we can, you know, to make the surroundings adaptable for what we need. That's what I'm hearing from you. And, and so I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I appreciate the response. I want to move on because we now have some additional, some additional people who have questions. Our next one is Michelle Pack. Ms. Pack?
Hi, thank you. So my name's Michelle Pack. I'm, I live at seventy-five forty-one North Berwin Avenue. And I do have a first grade child at Parkway. And I just want to say that I appreciate you guys opening. I actually wish we were opening earlier. I think waiting weeks before we've been planning this to open and hopefully looking at an opening plan since we realized we were going to stay virtual beforehand. As we said, we're one of the last districts to go to an in-person model. So obviously other districts are doing it and doing it well. And I have faith that we're vetting all the possibilities and really looking into the best interest of our students and our teachers. And we have the virtual model for those parents who don't feel that it's what they want for their family, then that virtual option is there. So I applaud us for keeping those options and not making it all or nothing and just let people have that. So I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to my child going in because we, I feel that they have missed a lot this year, especially those early elementary school students who really can benefit from someone being there and helping. And our family, we're frontline healthcare workers and our children have been going to virtual learning centers who have been using these types of systems for the full ten months and throughout the entire year. And I'm hopeful for my child to get to have that sense of community and class and be back with those children. So thank you and I'm looking forward to us opening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mr. Rodriguez? Justin Rodriguez?
Hello, hi. This is, I actually didn't realize I had a background set, but at least I'm not a cat. So I have that going for me. Okay, I just wanted to say, thank you Superintendent Moser for submitting the recommendation that I think the board should support the work that, that you and all the staff have done over these many, many months. And I am happy that you have recommended a start date that occurs prior to spring break. I think you're right that it makes sense to begin to shift in person for students that are able and willing to go in at the beginning of a, a new trimester. I also wanted to ask one question, and that was about if an entire section or classroom at Parkway had to go into quarantine, would that section then transition to a virtual learning model? And how would that look?
That's a great question. And yet the answer is yes, that we would then transition into a virtual learning model. And let's just say that, for example, if the teacher was feeling ill and not able to teach, that's when we start talking about bringing in our guest teachers. And we both have building level substitute teachers within both of our buildings as well that would be able to help support. We also, we talked a little bit earlier about teachers on call, a teacher management system where we're able to also get guest teachers that are able to come into our buildings. But the idea is, because we do know at the earlier grades, when we're looking at the cohort model, we would have to close down the classroom. And the idea would be that we continue the learning virtually. So that's an excellent question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, then our next question comes from Jamie McConnell.
Thank you. I have a second grader at Parkway. My address is two, three, five, zero, West Marn Avenue. Real simple question around lunch logistics. And if you guys went over this, I apologize. But I know in the handbook, it said that hot lunch will be available. They can also bring a cold lunch. Sounds like there is limited time for them to eat their lunch. So if a student does have hot lunch, is that half hour period also going to have them going into the lunchroom to get their lunch? Is that going to be delivered to the classrooms? How will that work? And then the second part of that, will there be any restrictions on how the students or what the students can bring for a cold lunch? And then my second question is around emotional support for our students. So I know we talked yesterday about some of the budget cuts being around some of the additional counseling sessions. But will we allow for any additional emotional support or emotional learning for our students as they're going back to class here in person?
So I'd like to start by addressing the first question that you had that was related to lunch. Our lunch service is Airmark, Airmark Lunch Service. And they will actually, so our classroom teachers will continue with the practice of taking attendance as well as asking the students what lunch option they would like. And for students who are bringing a cold lunch, that's completely fine as well. But Airmark will then bring their lunch options directly to each classroom. So, and then the students will eat within their classroom setting. We, we are asking all classrooms to be free peanut-free. There in the handbook, there was a direct link to products that we're encouraging families to bring, both for lunch and for snacks that are peanut and nut-free, just ensuring the health and safety for all of our students. And then your, can you remind me of what your second question was?
Yeah, it was around the emotional learning for our students. I know there's going to be a lot of questions and things like that.
Yes, you are absolutely correct. Both of our schools have amazing guidance counselors. We also have a district social emotional learning coach. We also have people who specialize in behavioral interventions. We also have a school social worker and a lot of resources. I do know that, for example, at Parkway, Mrs. Umar and Jess Shafe, our SEL coach, are working very closely to put together lessons and activities to roll out within the classroom setting, really designed to look at how to provide that social emotional support to our students as they look at transitioning. And it is important to note that even for families that are staying virtual, we want to continue to ensure that we have supports for all students because that's going to, for, for our students who, up to this point in the school year, have, for example, been with the same consistent classmates, that may look and feel a little different as we talk about some of the class groupings when you look at accommodating for an in-person model and a virtual learning model. So yes, we will have many supports available to students as well as to families. That's a huge component as well. We want to ensure that our families are doing well and, and are healthy and have the opportunity, if they need to have someone, that they can touch base with and talk to, that we have those supports available for our families too.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, then our next participant is, I believe, Brian Grandin.
Actually, it's Christine Lucas on my husband Brian Grandin's machine. One four four West Mount Royal Road. Hello, everyone. First, I'd like to say a big thank you for all the educators who are so diligently and flexibly teaching all students. Big, big, big applause to the job that you all have done. And I know many of you are out there listening. This has been a trying time of technology and dealing with a lot of emotions and a lot of demands. But I'd like to follow up on the question that both Tracy and also Gretchen alluded to. Right now, we have twenty-five percent of our student body who is remaining virtual, my son amongst them. And as an educator myself, students who choose the back row usually are not quite as motivated to get in the game and learn. However, now we have twenty-five percent of our students who are forced, not only in the back row, but out of the room, kind of, you know, I know it's our choice, but that's for health reasons. I would like some assurance, some, some, something that, you know, and we need confidence in this concurrent model. I just don't have it quite yet. So, you know, how, how do we address the learning of the twenty-five percent of the kids that are still at home? And also, I, I, I agree with the pushing back the deadline from March eighth. I, I think that's, that's a push for your educators. But yeah, what are we going to do for that twenty-five percent in the concurrent model? How does that roll out? And how do those students maximize their learning? Or are they just the minority who is going to be concurrently learning outside of the room? You know, looking at a screen from a distance? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Does someone want to field the question?
Sure, I, I can jump in and uh, maybe um, Ms. Westfall can also um, help and assist with this. Um, I do think, you know, to your point, 25% of our students are, are 25% of our students. And we are educating 100% of our students. And so making sure that those students who are learning virtually are not clumped together in one concurrent class with, with some students learning virtually, making sure that there are opportunities, that it's not just the only one, so that we can do some strategic pairing. In fact, I think there's opportunities here for students to engage in collaborative work in different ways. Um, you know, in my slide around concurrent learning, we don't envision this to be a streaming of teachers teaching with kids sitting behind a computer watching. Um, there's, there are opportunities for students to partner with their peers who are in person or other partners who are virtual. There are opportunities for teachers to work in small groups with students. Um, you know, the concurrent model has allowed for us to be able to, to meet those needs and to bring kids in and to give them a sense of community that probably didn't exist. Um, I do think there is a reality that some, some um, families and parents have brought up that you know, there will be that feeling of other people are there and I'm not. And that, and that I don't, you know, we will work and acknowledge that that is an issue that will be remaining there and we will work very hard at trying to bridge that for students because we will be educating all our students.
Uh, Anna, can I, I, how does this model roll out? How is the technology going to work? You, you know, when a teacher addresses a class right now, they're sitting right in front of a machine.
Yeah.
Yes, all students. Is that also what's going to happen live in the classroom? Or are they going to be standing in front of students who are seated, addressing the students who are seated with a camera in the corner for the virtual students? I don't know how, what it looks like.
Right. So right now, we are investigating some, some technologies, some conferencing tools. One of the, the primary issues that we know has come up in concurrent learning when we've talked to other districts is microphoning. So there is the ability that teachers could have um, potentially look at having some conferencing tools, which would allow them to log in on two different devices, right? So if I'm in a Zoom meeting, I could be logged in with my computer up front. So when I'm giving explicit instruction, I might have kids facing me and kids on a computer screen facing me. But then I also have the ability to move with, with another device throughout the room so that I can check in with students and, and have those other opportunities. And then go back to the device and allow those students who, you know, maybe if we were saying, you know, you're working with another student during this time, two of those students are in person and they zoom in with someone at home so that they can create that kind of bridging and collaboration.
And, and that technology will be available in two weeks? And how do students hear, virtual students hear what the students in class are saying?
The only way they would be able to hear what students in class are saying due to privacy, you know, the privacy issues is if they were assigned to work in groups, right? So if the teacher is teaching, they would hear the teacher. If they were working in a group, they would be zooming with those students who are in class via technology, because those, the presence of technology would be heavy in the classroom because of the, the need to limit shared resources.
Okay. Thank you. But the technology that you're speaking of, is that available currently for Glen Hills teachers?
We will be, we will be looking at, at trying to procure that technology. Um, it's not very, it's not technology, but we are already in conversations with our technology group in terms of looking at getting that, that ordered and ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, Nancy Gopinski.
Sorry, took me a second. Um, I just wanted to um, say thank you for um, all the thoughtful planning that's going into this. And also for the um, really great uh, virtual learning experience um, this year. I appreciate all the teachers' efforts um, with that. Um, I, I, I echo the concerns shared by some of the other uh, parents in regards to, you know, just making sure that our virtual learners, my daughter's going to stay virtual for um, uh, medical concerns. Um, that we, eh, kids don't feel isolated. So the efforts that you're going to make for that, I, I appreciate. Um, I'm worried about the timing for the staff. I'm um, I guess I, I hear like if, if, you know, certainly if teachers have a uh, medical concern that's documented that they would be able to be on leave, but then there's a lot of other teachers who may just have a lot of circumstances in their lives that make it very scary for them to come back. Maybe it's anxiety or something um, around all this, which I think is understandable. Um, and I guess I, I, so I think the timing of the rollout before they could get the vaccine um, is concerning and the number, the percentage of teachers who are worried about coming back, that I just feel bad that they're being put in that position. So I guess um, I, you know, I, I think timing it um, a little later makes sense so that they could be vaccinated. Um, or at least trying to really work with individual circumstances so that um, maybe some of those teachers who are really anxious would have some flexibility to maybe um, teach from home for a while and then come back later after they're vaccinated. So I guess just being flexible with staff is a concern. And then um, I, I guess I, the other piece of that, um, I'm also worried about some of the other kids who might have been um, experiencing, coming into the school because they have special education needs. And they've been able to come in and access their education at school because um, it, there haven't been a lot of people in the building, so it's been safe for them to do so. And now there's all these other students back in the building, which makes sense, obviously. But now they might have these medical concerns um, that leave them back at home, but they really can only access school um, really in person, that, that virtual learning for them doesn't um, work well. So I, I know that's a small percentage of students, but I guess I think as a district really looking at meeting um, that legal document of the IP for those families that it affects. And really maybe looking at um, right now, what does extended school year look like for some of those students? Um, so that they can meet their IP goals. Um, and for some of them, it might be really making sure that their hours are met throughout the summer. So I, I guess just thinking creatively ahead for that. And then I just, um, as a community, I guess, um, I just re, really encourage all of us um, to think about um, our own actions, um, especially if uh, school's going to resume, resume before spring break, that this is um, really a time to stick to your households um, and not go um, to Florida. Um, and that we really have to, we're all in it together and um, we need to all be um, still acting like our, you know, everyone's lives depend on it. So um, thank you. Um, thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gilman.
Hello, everyone. My question, and I want to also.
Ms. Gilman, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Two things, A, if you could speak up slightly and B, if you could also give us uh, your address.
Sure. 2500 West Brandwood Avenue in Glendale.
Thank you.
And uh, thank you, everyone, for giving us the platform to have this dialogue and thank you for all your efforts for the board and the administrators. And my question is, is really on, for those of us who have children in both schools, um, what's the plan if there is a recorded incident in one of the schools? So, you know, my sons, for example, but what happens to the, to the other, to the other school? You know, what's the plan?
So in terms of looking at contact tracing, we would work with the North Shore Health Department um, in terms of reporting those cases. So for example, if you had a child who tested positive for, for COVID in um, one school and it impacted um, you know, your child being quarantined because they're a member of that group, um, we would know that what we would do is rely on some of the advice of the North Shore Health Department um, to make sure that we're following those quarantine guidelines that are laid out. Um, and then we would fully communicate with families what the next steps would be. Um, obviously, if there's a positive case within your household, there are quarantine measures that would need to be put into place. Um, when there are not quarantine measures, it relies really heavily on isolation and there are some guidelines around that. Um, I believe um, Dr. Kilton might also be able to speak to some of those distinctive guidelines that are laid out for family members.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilman.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, our next uh, participant is Jenny Dos.
Hi. Thank you for giving me a chance. Uh, my name is Jenny and I live at sixty six oh five North Bravon Lane. Um, the first thing that I wanted to say is that um, I am also a teacher and um, when I had to go back to teaching that I was scared and anxious and um, I have six children and worried about what that meant for me and my health and what it was going to mean for my family and everything else. Um, and it was okay. Um, it's scary, but it, it was okay. And it's best for my students. I'm a special education teacher. Um, and we follow the mitigation strategies. And we sanitize, and we sanitize, and we sanitize, we sanitize when we go in the room, we sanitize when we come out of the room. Um, we eat in the lunchroom and we sanitize, and we sanitize. I use a lot of lotion, but it's okay. Um, so I know that it's scary. It's scary as a teacher. It's scary as a parent. Um, but I went back to school in September. Um, and it's okay. And my school didn't have any inner school spread of COVID. Um, and we did have students who had COVID um, positive cases from their families. And there was zero spread in our school. So I just want you all that are in this call to know that. And then I did have uh, two questions. Um, one question is the concurrent lessons. I have a question about special education students that are in the classrooms and how they're going to be supported um, in those classes if they are um, still at home due to their health needs and that they can't come in, kind of similar to the last question. Um, so how, how will they be supported through those concurrent lessons? And then my second question is um, about the students that are coming in now for services, how will that be impacted through this transition? So how, what, what, what will happen with those students and their services? So will there be services be put on pause or will they have to go all virtual for a while? Um, or has that plan been thought of yet? So um, one, just, I recognize how difficult this is for everyone. And then my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So answer the two questions.
So the, the questions regarding the concurrent model, um, we will be using, utilizing a co-serve, co-teach model. And then for those moments of specialized instruction, um, those might look like a push-in to co-serve. Um, or they might look at um, an instance in where students would go to a special education location or meet individually or in a small group with a special education teacher to receive services to meet the IP. Um, in terms of the transition, we have had some preliminary discussions about how we might look at transitioning students and making sure that we are not discontinuing services for those special education students who are currently receiving services. As we know, it's very important to continue um, to provide services for them.
Okay, thank you. Um, our next question is from Stacy Hauck, or is it uh, Jeff Hauck?
Yeah, you get me, but you know, the worst of the two. But anyways, um, so first of all, thanks for everybody, for all of your work, et cetera. Um, first of all.
I'm sorry.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. That's two sixty five, Wayside Court.
Thank you.
Okay, my bad.
Go ahead.
First off, thanks for all of your work. Um, I appreciate the option to hopefully come back in school. Um, first off, a real quick comment and then a question. Um, first, the comment, as someone who teaches his entire day concurrently, I'm going to implore um, parents and staff to give yourselves a little bit of grace. It's doable. It's not going to be perfect. Is it the ideal thing? No. Do you screw up and you fix it for the next hour or the next day? Yeah. And that's how we learn. It's doable. Just, I'm going to implore everybody to give everybody a little bit of grace, particularly with the concurrent model. Um, it's not going to be all puppy dogs and kittens on the first day. Um, second, um, before I get to the question is, I would implore the board to approve Dr. Moser's recommendation. Um, being a data guy, seventy four point two or six percent of the community is in favor of this, and I would just like to point that out again, um, of going back to some sort of in-person schooling. And then after the two comments, my question, uh, clarification, and they're both on the weeks in March. And I apologize if I missed it. There was a labeled transition week and then the week beginning of March 8th. Is the transition week a week of normal virtual schooling? Because I don't know if that was clarified in the PowerPoint. It might be in the reopening plan. And then also, will there be for the staggered start, normal virtual schooling? Should this plan be approved? Like, if I've got a sixth grader and they're not coming until the 10th or 11th or whatever it was, is there virtual school the eighth, ninth, and 10th? And is there a virtual school the preceding transitional week? I just want clarification on that, so we can plan for the wee ones. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who would like to answer that question?
I'll start, uh, if I may. Uh, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Hauck, uh, let's talk about the week of March 1st, which is that transition week. Uh, we have the option of using part of that week uh, to continue the virtual uh, instruction uh, with our students and part of the week to enable the teachers to prepare for the, the change starting on March 8th. That's why we're calling it a transition. The other option that we are discussing is whether that whole week will be the transition. Part of the problem with that, and it's part of the discussion, is that you are correct. Uh, with a rollout uh, starting time, if, if we cut off the virtual instruction, we may be cutting off instruction for a period of time that we, we, we don't want. So uh, the transition, there will be transition in the week of March 1st. I cannot give you a definitive answer on which days it'll be uh, instructional and, and which days will be uh, professional development time for, for the teachers. And I apologize uh, as recently as, what? Three o'clock, four o'clock this afternoon, we have been discussing that particular question and uh, uh, i- it's, it's an issue that we are working on. And in terms of uh, the rollout dates, uh, at this particular time, I, I, if uh, the, the principals have a better answer than I do at the, at this time, uh, that's all part, they're tied, it's tied to the transition time. Yeah, with, with my answer is, is uh, uh, that uh, we're con, we're concerned that the kids will be out of education uh, too long if we uh, if we don't use some of the time in that transition week for instruction.
And I'm fine. Like, I obviously want you guys to plan and give your staff what your staff needs. The only ask that I have is that you communicate that as soon as you know it. I know you guys will. I get, I guess, it was kind of a rhetorical question, but nonetheless, I was looking to see if you already knew.
Yeah, no, your point is well taken. And uh, and the principals enjoyed talking with me about that this afternoon as we were debating that particular point. So thank, thank you for asking it. Appreciate that.
And you've changed your brand of soda these days, but anyways, I digress.
I, I have. I, I have. But it's a cola, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Hauck. Um, I'm going to go to our next person. Um, the name is Zandra and Charles C.
Uh, yes, my name is Zandra Clifford. I look at sixty four thirty one North Green Bay Avenue. Um, thank you for this forum and all the thoughtful work that has gone into the planning for reopening. Um, I, my family is part of that seventy five percent nearly who want to have our daughter who's in seventh grade at Glen Hills return to school, even though it poses risk for my husband and I with our underlying conditions. This has not been, virtual learning has been less than ideal. It's been very difficult for her. Um, and just three questions. Um, I know we were talking a lot about the cohorts, or the classroom and cohort sizes for virtual versus um, in-person learning for school, for. In-person learning for school, for classes, what will be the true classroom sizes? I just am concerned about teachers and the concurrent learning model. Um, and as much as I want Charlie to go back to school, I'm also concerned about the March eighth date. Not because of vaccinations per se, cause as someone. Very rightly stated that there's not, when she's, one of the teachers who said they had not, there was no in-school transmission from a COVID. Um, and that the CDC recommends that, you know, the. Teachers being vaccinated does not have to happen before we reopen. But the CDC also recommends that people need to. Quarantine so, up to seven days after they travel. We know that people are gonna travel for spring break. So why wouldn't we wait to open school in person? Seven days after spring break or move up spring break, have people quarantine for seven days? And ask everyone to go get testing because we have, you know, testing is free. And then just out of curiosity. For teach, I know like people in education will be eligible to receive vaccines should they want it, March first. I work at the Medical College of Wisconsin and if I wanted, I'll be eligible to get it through my workplace. Has North Shore shared, um, Health District? Or Health Department, excuse me, shared information about any sort of priority that teachers will receive. Um, in being vaccinated should they want to be. Thank you.
Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
You, 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 you cut out anything unless.
I'm sorry. My, my third question was about, um, I know that people in education. Will have, uh, the ability to have priorities starting March first in Wisconsin to be vaccinated. Um, and I work at MCW, so I'll have the opportunity if I wish to be vaccinated through my employer. Has the North Shore, um, Health Department shared information about? What kind of priority might be given to teachers? Should they want to be vaccinated? I know like, you know, we've given police officers and public other. Public health service people and firefighters priority. Um, people, you know, those community, those groups have been now coming to MCW to get vaccinated themselves. Are they gonna be, um? Are they doing anything for the teachers? To offer that should they want it to?
So I'm not sure if Dr. Kilton is still on at this time, but what I can share with you is. Oh, I was just gonna say just an hour ago, uh, Dr. Kilton did send an email to our staff. Our district staff just indicating that she had been asked by her contact at the North Shore Health Department. To gather some data around the interest of eligible staff members. Employed at North Shore Schools and receiving the COVID nineteen vaccine. And so she's asking, um, our staff to take a moment to fill out the vaccine survey. Um, so if you wanna elaborate a little bit more Shannon, but I know that there's things in the works right now.
Absolutely. Um, for any teachers in the district that are on, you can check your email and it's a, it's a short survey. It's one question. Um, the North Shore Health Department is basically looking for. The exact number from every school district in the North Shore of those that are interested in getting the vaccine or. Um, the number that Glendale, for example, needs to reserve for vaccines. Um, we are still listed as a March first. Um, and I assure you, I register the district myself with, um. Um, Freiter and the Medical College to get on their list as well. Um, and we're being, um, very attentive to any opportunities that come our way. But, um, I'm in touch with Ann at the North Shore Health Department almost daily regarding vaccines. So right now my goal is to send the data by Monday. So teachers, if you're hearing me, please fill out the survey so that I can get them accurate data. But yes, the goal is March first, but, um, we continue to hear from the North Shore Health Department that the supply is, um, in question. So, um, we're hopeful, but yes, March first is our date yet.
Well, I'm glad to hear that that consideration is being given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear my other two questions about the true classroom size model? And the March, and then about the, the start date and the concern about people traveling. Was over spring break.
Right. Um, I can address the, the question regarding. Uh, class size and our, um, grades, um, our, our middle school. So at Glen Hills, our largest class size are right now is thirty students. So if we're looking at the actual in-person students, we would have only eighteen. Cause as, uh, Mr. Beckman talked about earlier, we measured the classrooms with, you know, rulers and we're able to speed. Sort of Mac that we can in class sizes with six feet of distancing. So you would have the potential to add other students up to that thirty, but we will seek to, um. Provide additional teachers to help support those components so that we can keep those students who are. Students who are remaining virtual would be spread out so that those class sizes wouldn't bubble.
And, uh, as to, uh. Uh, the question, well, I guess, uh, as to the question of spring break. You know, I, I would just wanna add that, uh. I don't know, uh, the extent to which families travel in spring break versus, uh, the winter holidays. Uh, which included Thanksgiving and Christmas, which I think were higher risk and higher volume travels. Um, I, I, I don't know that. The travel with spring break and in time where frankly, there's at least the start of some vaccination. Uh, is going to be a significant of a disruption potentially, uh, to, uh, learning as frankly. Uh, Thanksgiving, Christmas travel work.
But will we ask families who do travel to quarantine? I mean, like all of this is about the honor system and, you know, this is, these are things that are. Sort of top of mind because we talk about this so much where I work.
Well, and look, I think that, uh, that goes back though to the question about the mitigation strategies. And, uh, the Swiss cheese approach and making sure that we layer things so that we have different, uh, tragedies in place. Unfortunately, what we've learned is that, you know, we can't control other people. And, uh, some things there are going to be risks. And I think that, uh, that's just something that you accepted their risk and you do everything that you can within your power to mitigate it. And that's what I've been hearing tonight. Okay, uh, our next.
Sorry, can I just add to that briefly? Because I just wanted to say as, um, head of the communications committee that I've, I've started to broach this topic with. The building leaders and administrators as well, that I think should we move forward with reopening? That that's an important component to be looking at how we communicate. Around community responsibility, uh, how we educate, how we, um, you know, engage people. And, and promote education around some of those things. Um, traveling for spring break being sort of one of them. So I would like to see the communication, communications committee, um, looking at, at some of that as well.
Thank you, Danielle. Appreciate that.
Very good point. Okay, we have three more people left, uh, with their hands raised. Our next one is Christine Wieland.
First off, thank you so much. Um, I, uh, live at five four five one North Lydell Avenue. Um, I just wanna say thank you. You guys have been. So, um. Just trying to do your best in this situation and I am glad to hear that we are considering reopening. I will be part of the seventy-five percent that is going back to school. I do have a few questions, two actually. One, um, students that have a class that's not part of their cohort, for example. My son has a class in a different, um, grade level. How will that be? For example, when he comes back from lunch and he needs to go to a different grade level group? How will that be addressed? Um, and my second question is, I know Parkway will be doing away with a lot of the back and forth with technology. How will Glen Hills be addressing that? Um, will they be having their laptops? I know a lot of their schoolwork has been done through either Seesaw or Google Classroom. Will they be continuing turning in their assignments that way or are we going back to workbooks? Thank you.
So I can take the questions, um, regarding Glen Hills in terms of, I'm assuming moving to a different grade level is going to be a Glen Hills question. Um, so in part of that, um, model, what we would do is, as you can see, is we're working very, um, hard right now. To work on scheduling in which students kind of move with each other throughout the day, right? Cause they will transition classes. Um, so as they're looking at transitioning classes, they would move mostly with the same cohort. But there will be exceptions to that and it's part of that would be that specialized programming. So if your child does go to a different grade level for a math class, for example, they would transition. But what we would do is line up those math periods as best as we can so that they're not missing something else, right? So we're trying to coordinate when those things happen. So it's kind of a, it's a, it's a big puzzle, so to speak. But so we can put that in so that those children can go to another classroom. That is where again, going back to that model of layering mitigation strategies, we would let rely on masking and strategic seating for your child within that room. So that they're making sure that, you know. If they're coming into that space that we keep them in a seat that it wouldn't have been occupied by someone else. It's an open seat for them during that time. Um, so that, that sort of fits on that. Um, I will speak a little bit about, um, the technology piece. Um, we will be moving to pretty much a one-to-one format at Glen Hills in terms of kids carrying their Chrome back, Chromebooks back. Worth, we know that and particularly with the use of concurrent teaching and the limiting of supplies. Plus with the success that we've seen with through the use of Google Classroom, because it has been a successful tool to help students organize. And it really is the routine that they're familiar with at this point, right? So in order to kind of keep that continuity, teachers will still rely on those resources. So that's why we would be using technology going back and forth from home to school. So that we can, could, can create some continuity in learning right now, because we know there have been so many changes.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, and I do think that, you know, this is something that should be addressed. And, uh, I do think that we can have additional communication. To follow up, uh, after, uh, the meeting and prior to, uh. Uh, to implementation, if that's where it goes. Okay, um, and we've actually got a couple more names that ended up on the list, Amanda Seligman.
Hi, thank you so much. Amanda Seligman, uh, seventy-one twenty North Braeburn Lane. Uh, like everyone else, I really wanna thank the staff and the, um, teachers for all the hard work they've done to get ready for this. I will say that my child has opted to remain virtual. She said to me, have you ever met children? Um, and thought she would be safer at school, uh, sorry, at home, but I support the reopening. Uh, despite that, I have, uh, three, two questions and a comment. Uh, the first thing is I think I've inferred from the presentations this evening. That the concurrent model at Glen Hills is being driven by the fact that seventy-five percent, rather than say fifty percent of families. Uh, are opting to have their children in the building and that that. That the concurrent model is necessary in order to ensure that the classes that are in the building are small enough to be safe. And I'd like to know, uh, if that's correct. I have to say that I've taught concurrently and, um, I do not agree with Ms. Young respectfully. That, uh, about the opportunities, I think there's, that's gonna be really, really hard. And I wish that there could be an all-virtual cohort of kids who would just feel special for being, uh, in a virtual cohort. My second question is, uh, did I understand correctly that all children are going to be expected to appear? In person for state mandated testing at some point, uh, after spring break? Could that be clarified? And then my comment is about, I'm really delighted to hear that the North Shore Health Department is proactive with respect to, uh, vaccinating teachers. And I would like to suggest that, um, because the second shot is reportedly a doozy, that not all the teachers have their second shot on the same day. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. Could you repeat your second question again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, if the sound may not be good. Um, my, the question is, is the expectation that all students will appear in person for state testing after spring break? And, uh, I realize that you've been planning the reopening, but I wonder if there's been any thought given to how that might work. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin, uh, I'll, I'll go to the second question first and call on, uh, Jenica Westfall to, uh, answer the, uh, the testing question. Um, Miss Westfall, can you help us out?
Yes, um, yes, the state, um, is requiring that students, um, come take the test, um, in an in-person manner. So we have been having some discussions around how we would make that work for, um. Students who are virtual or if we were still in a virtual model, if the board chooses on that direction. So we've had some discussions about, um, possibly, um, doing appointments or bringing in small, smaller, you know, cohorts of virtual students. Possibly on those Fridays, um, if we continue the asynchronous days. So it'd be more of a scheduling, you know, smaller groups of students to come in. In different spaces within the building, um, because we wouldn't have any students in the buildings on those Fridays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, uh, then we have one more, I believe. Jill, is it Geller or Goller? I apologize.
That's okay. It's Goller, um, and my address is eight twenty-five West Good Hope Road. Um, I kind of forgot where I was going with this, but I so appreciate you guys kind of, um, all of the work that you've put into this. And following the science, uh, at the beginning of the year, we heard from Dr. Fauci making the, um. Recommendation that all schools look at returning to in-person models. Um, because the incidence of. Transmission from children is lower than was originally, um. Thought, so I appreciate that. My family has been really, really cognizant and careful about things. And my husband and I and our four children all still ended up with COVID somehow. It was not terrible. We all got through it. Okay. Um, so we're bringing our antibodies when we come back to school, hopefully around March eighth. Um. Darn, I totally forgot my question. So you know what? Uh, I won't stick around here, but thanks for the opportunity to get back in before spring break.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment. Um, and with that, there are no other hands up. Uh, I don't see any other, uh, speakers who have, uh. Uh, not gone already and I'm afraid that at nine thirty, um, I'm going to have to close off visitor participation. Uh, if someone hasn't spoken, that's a different matter, but, uh, we've had a pretty long meeting. And, uh, our administration or board will be around to answer any questions offline. But I do think that we need to get to, uh, the next part, uh, of, uh, our meeting, which is, uh. Item two C, which is the reopening plan vote. I, I, I will actually see Ms. Goller's handed, uh, raised though and. I'll, I'll just ask Ms. Goller if you remembered it, if you could, uh, ask very quickly.
Uh, no, I'll lower my hand. Thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, then let's, uh, go to, uh, item two C, which is the reopening plan vote. Uh, it is recommended that the board vote on the reopening of the Glendale River Hills Schools. Dr. Moser, do you have anything that you would like to add or offer with respect to the recommendation?
Well, with your permission and the permission of the school board, uh, if, if I could read my recommendation again. I am recommending to the Glendale River Hills School District School Board tonight. That they approve of a resolution that directs the reopening of the school district schools on March eighth. In a rollout format for all grades and that the reopening of the schools will allow for both virtual and in-person instruction. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm going to ask if there's a motion with respect to the recommendation.
Tell move Teresa.
And is there? Okay, um, as part of discussion, um, I, uh, I have some comments.
I have some comments too, so.
So what I'd like to do, I'd like to go and just before we get into any further discussion, I'd like to start. Uh, and if anyone has any, uh, specific comments, uh, but I'll start with Ms. Lukovic.
Um, thank you, um, President Franklin. I have sat here and I made a conscious effort to just really listen tonight. To hear what everybody had to say, to hear the plan, read the plan thoroughly. Um, my one main thing is. We're not going to have a perfect plan in a imperfect situation. This, um, situation is not perfect. We, um, pandemic. We pandemic did not dictate exactly how we are supposed to do things. It's not following the rules. It was supposed to be gone back in April, you know, so anything that we we vote or we do, I just wanted people to know what my mindset is. This is what us humans, the humans that are working in the district, the humans that are teacher, the human that are are custodial staff, all those people are in, we are thinking of them as we make a decision, but we're also trying to think of the kids and no situation will be perfect. But with this being said, we're thinking of kind of have a democracy, the the majority rules. And seventy-five percent of the people want this open and you do have an option to go virtual. I mean, I understand it. I have chosen to keep my daughter Nicolay opened up and I, this is her senior year and I chose to keep her virtually. That was my choice. That was her choice. There are people who are happy with it, some are not, but you have to make a choice. So I will be when the time comes, I will be voting to I will be voting to follow Dr. Moses' recommendation because at the bottom line is there's nothing perfect and we can't do anything perfect. One last thing, you know, couple of months ago, when they, you know, people thought we were going to open up, we were yelled at for thinking about opening up. When we decided not to open up, we were yelled at for opening up. So nobody's going to be one hundred percent happy. And you can always email me or call me and ask me if, you know, whatever thoughts that I have, but that is, that is how I plan on voting.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I've struggled with this decision. You know, gone back and forth, have lost sleep, I think we all have. But I I I feel satisfied that our administrators are that they're sorry. I I really do believe that our, everyone's coming from a place of trying to do the best they can and that they're motivated by what is best for our students and that I've seen how they're walking through this process. Weighing everything and how it plays out for all people and there is no perfect plan. I agree with Tamika. I do have faith that should we proceed, I have faith in our district's resilience. I have faith in our district's ability to adapt. I think that nothing is set in stone and we will learn from 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 everything that happens and and we will continue to improve and seek to meet every student's needs. I I I believe that in virtual, we have not been able to meet everyone's needs and some some families have thrived and been successful and some have not. And I think unfortunately, the same will be true if we return to in-person. So I echo Tamika's sentiment that this is a hard situation and I have not taken this vote lightly. I think we've all done our due diligence. I'm trying to ground myself in the data and research and anecdotal data and talking to constituents and school board members in other districts and families and teachers in other districts who've who've been through this down this path. And so yeah, I I think that that that's what's guiding, that's what's guiding me tonight. And and I too will be, you know, available as a resource for listening and continuing to to work. It's my understanding that should we vote to approve, we will be able to sort of continue to tweak and address things. And I I think maybe there are things worth taking second looks at and things that we will perhaps want to address as we learn about them going through it. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Ms. Krychowiak.
As it pains me to to agree with my colleague at Nicolay Jeff Hauck. I just want to say that the, there has been an inordinate amount of work that has occurred in this process. And I I really ask everyone to understand and empathize with grace with our staff, with our administration, with our teachers, because what is it, what is happening and what is going to happen is something that is uncharted waters for everyone. So I'd like everyone to remember that. And we are doing what is best for our students and we are taking the safety of our teachers. And it's, it's hard to be impartial when I'm a teacher in a district that is learning, teaching concurrently right now, but as Jenny Doss said too, it's scary and it also, it also can be done.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Seem.
No offense, Andy, but I think the strong thoughtful women on the board have said exactly what needs to be said. And I very, very much appreciate all the work that has gone into this by the administration, by the staff. It's been a tough, tough, tough year for everyone. And I know with this administration, with this staff, we'll approach this with the resilience, grace and strength we've gained from experience and learn from any mistakes and make it the best possible reopening possible. I will agree with Tamika and Danielle and Molly in that I am in favor.
Thank you. I'd like to say a few words as well. This pandemic is possibly the greatest challenge that has confronted this district. It's certainly the greatest challenge that's confronted me as a board member in twelve years. And I certainly wouldn't wish the decision on to anyone else. In any other year, entrusting us as a school district with your children is no small request. It's also no small feat. So for this year, whether your children remain virtual or return to the building, we must still provide them the best possible education and still meet them at their needs. Their individual needs may differ, but regardless, those needs have to be our priority. That means that when the parents of three-fourths of our children believe that their kid need to be back in a physical setting after a year of virtual learning, we have to act for them so long as we also continue to meet the needs of the other twenty-five percent who choose to remain virtual. But to make this work, if we're going to do this, those parents also need to recognize that their choices and those of their children impact others. However, they share responsibility. And this is something that we talk about in the normal meeting, in the beginning of our meeting, we believe that education is a shared responsibility. And we hope that if we do this, that the people who allow their kids back into school treat the moment responsibly as well. For all the precautions and all the PPE, we can't eliminate risk. Can minimize it. And other schools have, so we can too. We're well poised to learn from these other examples that are next door. But it's not going to happen all at once and not all going to be perfect without starting gate. We can't wait for everything to be perfect before we start. It's going to get there, but we can't expect it to be that way on day one. We don't have the luxury in this case of waiting until the time is perfectly right. And that's a difficult concession to make. I know firsthand, though, how much effort our administration has poured into reopening. Our team of administrators, and I think hopefully everyone has seen that tonight, tonight has worked tirelessly. I want to start by just taking a moment to acknowledge Dr. Moser. Another interim administrator might have punted on this rather than confronted the challenge. And Dr. Moser has led the effort to reopen. And I've been very impressed tonight, not just by him, but by each and every one of our staff members for their dedication and for their professionalism. Dr. Kilton, Mr. Beckman, Ms. Young, Westfall, Dr. Smith, everyone. And Ms. Yumar, I think you all did a fantastic job tonight and a very in-depth thorough job of explaining where we are at right now. But for all that planning, I know that our plans are going to be adjusted and it's going to be in real time. Nonetheless, you've risen to the challenge and you've given us a plan that, look, no plan is perfect, but this one is a really good start. And from my viewpoint, being on board for twelve years, I think that we need to trust in the professionalism that they've demonstrated and the work that they've done. I do want to say one thing though to our faculty. I think that some of you have expressed and certainly you've heard others express concern for you. Each of you works very hard every day for our children. You are on the front lines and that's not small talk. That's, that's very sincere. We mean it. We see that. And not just me, it's the board, it's the administration. Our parents as a whole advocate for you as much as they do for our own children. And so I hope that you feel that during this crisis, we have supported you and that we've demonstrated our faith in you. And I hope that we've earned your goodwill to try this. I believe that if our community, our faculty, our administration and our board work together and make the best choices that they can to impact others in a positive way, we can make this reopening work. And with that, I would be lying if I said I was nervous, but I support and believe that this is the right path forward for us in this district today. Thank you. All right, so enough long-winded me. We have a motion. Is there any other discussion? If not, I will take a roll call vote. Molly Krychowiak.
Hi.
Teresa Seem.
Hi.
Danielle Bailey.
Hi.
Tamika Bukovic.
Hi.
And Andrew Franklin votes aye. Motion carries. The reopening is planned for March eighth. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, board members. And again, thank you faculty and administration.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah.
This is Senator Taylor. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the thoughtful way that you all have proceeded. And as a state legislator, just listening in as someone who represents your district parts of it, of your constituents, I just really wanted to just say, I know it's a hard decision and I hope that the legislature will be more engaged with being helpful. But if there's anything that I can do, please do not hesitate to reach out. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
You.
Well, with that, item three A, a motion to adjourn.
So moved Teresa.
I will do a roll call vote tonight and spare everyone all in favor.
Voice vote.
A voice vote. I'm sorry, I apologize, a voice vote. Motion carries. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you for attending. If you have further questions, please make sure you reach out to us or to the administration. We're not going anywhere. We're in this with you.
Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, administration and school board. Thank you so much.
Thank you, teachers.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, staff. Good night.